Information and connection links to the meeting are provided on the Town of Plymouth's website at plymouth-nh.org. Okay, um, so, meeting is called to order. I will do a quick roll call. Um, John. Was here a second ago. Um, Mary Ann.
Here.
Carl.
Present.
John.
I'm back and I'm present.
Phil.
Present.
Mike Bouchard.
Present.
Susan.
Present.
And Rebecca, I am also here. So, since we are missing two full members, I would like to invite both Susan and Mike Bouchard to be full voting members. Um, alright, um. So, next up, review of minutes. It sounds like we didn't get the minutes for this meeting, which is probably better anyway because we've got such a full agenda, so let's just save it for, um, our first work session, or work session in May. Um, alright. Next up, acknowledgement of communications received. Um, so, we got, um, some comments. These came via email on a wetlands permit application. Everyone was able to look at that. Typically, we don't do much with wetlands applications on the planning board, especially if they don't pertain to a particular, application that we're reviewing. So, um, so I think we can just note that we received them and then, um, and then I think the other communications, we got a letter from Plymouth Square, a letter from Metta Butter for a, um, for another site plan review we have tonight, and then another letter for a site plan review for a different case. So, we can talk about those specifically. Is there any other communication that should be highlighted, June?
No, there was, I had my list for, um, the letters that I sent out at the end of last week from Plymouth Squares, Plymouth Square. The email about the Purlak, Penny River Local Advisory Committee comments about the wetlands permit. And then, um, I think it was Tuesday, I sent out another one, which was a letter from Joseph Carter, and then another one today that late this afternoon or mid-afternoon, I sent out another Butter comments. But you're right, we can address those during those application discussions.
So, we'll just bring those up as part of the public hearing since they are a Butter, either a Butter, um, correspondence or applicant correspondence. So. Alright, now, we'll move on to new business. Um, so we've got this arranged, so we're going to look at any new application before us. We will deal with those as a, to determine their completeness, and we'll do that with each of those three applications. Uh, and then we'll move on to the public hearing. Does that, it's a little different than how we've done it in the past, but does that work, um, for board members to do it that way? See nodding heads, thank you. Okay, so, first up, a minor subdivision application from Wasset Investment Fund, PID number 228-012-000. Um, this is a subdivision of a hundred and two point two acre lot, um, on Texas Hill and Old Hebron Road. Um, the, so that the parent lot will be split into two lots, thirteen point seven acres and eighty eight point five acres. Um, so generally, how we do this, um, is we will invite the applicant to speak and present, um, the application. Um, the board needs to weigh on whether the application is complete or not, and once we have accepted it's complete, then we can begin the public hearing process, um, after we review the subsequent applications. So, um, do we have an applicant or the represent, representative for the applicant for this case? Okay, I see Tom there, that, I'm assuming that's you, Tom. Um, and you are on mute, but you can go ahead and unmute yourself and then just give a presentation on your application. And specifically, if you can indicate any waivers you're asking for in our subdivision regulations, um, it helps the board weigh on, in on the completeness of your application.
Okay, uh, I had submitted a narrative with the application. I don't know if each one of you have that or not, but I'll just basically go down that. As you mentioned, it's a hundred and two point two acre lot, um, getting split into eighty eight point five and thirteen point seven acres. The majority of the lot is under a conservation easement held by Romney Ecological Systems, also known as Penny Baker Land Trust. The conservation easement allows for, um, in this particular tract, uh, two subdivisions. There were two residential sites reserved in the conservation easement. One residential site and a subdivision was approved in 2016. So, this is the second residential site, and the easement allows for, um, additional land outside of what was designated as the resident, residential site, um, that, uh, can include easement land. And so, that easement land that's within this proposed thirteen seven acre, tract, um, will remain under conservation easement. And so, there is a designated area that was part of the easement. Um, there was a designated area within which residential development can occur. And that's restricted to one residential use. Yeah, the residential site on this particular proposed subdivision is eight acres out of the thirteen point seven acres. Uh, this, uh, proposed lot will have a thousand and thirty nine feet of frontage on Texas Hill Road. I'm sorry, um, the parent tract, the eighty eight point five acres will have over a thousand feet of frontage on Texas Hill Road, and almost twenty three hundred feet of frontage on Old Hebron Road, and that's all, uh, subject to the conservation easement. This proposed, uh, thirteen point seven acre lot will have eleven, um, one thousand one hundred and fifty three feet of frontage on Texas Hill Road. And there's an existing, uh, logging, um, driveway on this site already. And I viewed that with the highway manager in January, and, um, he was fine with that location, and, you know, uh, if a driveway permit comes in, um, his recommendation, I believe, will be to add some fill to, just to bring it up to, uh, a lesser grade coming on to Texas Hill Road. The parent and this thirteen point seven acre lot are both greater than five acres in size, so state subdivision approval is not required, uh, nor was it requested. Uh, the soil type is, um, acceptable and suitable for onsite septic disposal system. And on to waivers, um, requesting, uh, your regulations require, uh, plat scale of one inch to a hundred feet. Uh, we're requesting a waiver to go to one inch equals two hundred feet. And that, um, is basically the same scale as the original conservation easement plan, as well as the prior subdivided lot in 2016. Your regulations require dimensions, um, distances to be shown to hundredths of a foot. Uh, parts of this survey is a compilation of, a number of prior surveys. Some of those were done with compass and tape methods. And so, we're just requesting a waiver that, uh, basically to meet state survey standards, um, that the boundaries whose distances were measured with compass and tape method, methods just be shown to a tenth of a foot instead of a hundredth of a foot. And lastly, uh, the regulations call for, um, topo contours at five foot intervals. We're just requesting a waiver that to show, uh, a higher detail of two foot contours for the thirteen point seven acre lot, um, and no contours on the rest of the parent tract, as it's all under conservation easement and can't be developed any further. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, any questions from the board about the completeness of this application? Now, um, our report from the town staff does say that it, um, the waivers are appropriate for this plan. Um, so, um, and so it's recommended that this application is accepted as complete. Any, any other comments from the board or some sort of motion? June, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I actually have a, um, I could show a picture of the subdivision if anybody wants it by doing a quick screen share, but anybody needs to see it.
Do folks want to see that now? We can also wait till, okay, I see a shaking of a head. We, we should look at it at some point, um, but if we want to wait until we rule on the application as complete, I think that's fine, too.
I move, we accept the application as complete.
Thank you, Carl.
I'll second.
Thank you, John. I will read the roll. John.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
Carl.
Hi.
Phil. You're on mute if you said something, Phil. Phil? You could.
I'm sorry, I had my volume off. I was.
Okay.
Sorry.
You said abstain?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Mike.
Hi.
Susan. I don't see, oh, Susan, I see you there.
I lost internet and just barely got back on, so I missed everything that you just did.
Okay. So, we were just, um, so it sounds like an extension for, this is the, um, the subdivision for, at the corner of, um, New Hebron Road in Texas Hill. Alright. And then I'm going to say aye. So, on the, we have accepted the application is complete. Okay, um, so, June, do you want to pop it up on the screen so we can just take a look? Um, as June's doing that, I just want to remind folks that, um, so there is a conservation easement on, um, on this parcel as, as Tom has mentioned, um. Obviously, that's an important consideration, but it's not a consideration for us as a board. Um, we make our decision based on our town regulations, and it's up to the applicant to be coordinating with the, the land trust in question, um, as far as whether or not the subdivision meets the, the stipulations as established in the conservation easement. Alright, so I think maybe just, um, yeah, so where the, maybe we can just circle the, where the parent parcel is, where the line that's dividing it is, um, you can obviously see the, the contours in the, the child portion. Okay, so there's the parent parcel, there's this, um, maybe, June, maybe you can talk after this because I feel like I'm trying to narrate something. No, it's totally fine.
Or Tom can do it, too. Yeah, I realize, or Tom, we can ask Tom to do it. It's his story. But yeah, the, the parent parcel is the red line kind of out around here. So, this is, um, Old Hebron Road. I may have said New Hebron on them. If I said New Hebron on the staff report, I apologize. Old Hebron and then, um, Texas Hill here. So then, uh, there, this follows along like this. So, the parent parcel goes along the road, um, in this way. So, what they're subdividing out is this lot in this area. So, um, this version does show the contours. I can blow this up, maybe really sophisticated here. Um, so yes, it does drop off a bit, and I probably should have noticed that. But the proposed driveway locations here, so the slope, it slopes down away from Texas Hill Road.
Great. Any questions from the board now that we've gotten a chance to look at the, the site plan there? Okay, I am going to, um, open this up for a public hearing. It's six forty-five, so anyone who wants to speak of any nature about this project, um, we'll try and keep your minute, your comments to no more than three minutes. But now's the time, so go ahead and unmute yourself and, uh, um, and I'm just realizing that I said that we were going to do all the completeness of the application, and I completely forgot. So, turns out old habits die hard, but this, I think, is a fairly quick case, so we'll just keep rolling with it. Sorry about that. Um, okay, so the public hearing is open at six forty-five. Any comments from the public? Paul?
Yes. Uh, I'm here representing the interest, uh, I'm here as well as Gino and Fiskelli, uh, representing the interest of Romney Ecological Systems, better known as Quincy Bog, uh, and the Penny Baker Land Trust. We are the grantees of the conservation easement, and so, um, we're not here to object to this subdivision, but simply to be certain that the purchaser of this land, um, when it's conveyed, understand all of the terms that are in the easement deed that's been registered in the, um, county courthouse since, um, since two thousand and eleven. It's rather specific about what's allowed and what's not allowed on the property. We just want to make sure that that is respected by the, and because it's our responsibility to monitor all conserved lands. So, that's, uh, the only assertion we want to make. Unless, Gino, you want to add anything? No? Okay, that's, uh, that's it.
Thanks, Paul. Glad to know that, um, that the easement holders are here tonight, so. Any other public comments? Okay, um, so bringing it back to the board, any further questions or comments about this application? Also, now would be a good time to make some sort of motion about approval. Anybody?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, Carl. I'll read the roll. John.
Hi.
Mary Ann. Carl.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
Mike.
Hi.
Susan.
Hi.
And aye from me. Alright. Thank you. Um, thanks, representatives from the land trust and Tom. Um, we will now.
Rebecca, I just want to point out that Mike Ahearn just joined the meeting.
Okay. Alright, hi, Mike. Um, I've already appointed two alternates to the, um, to be voting members, so we'll just have you participate in the conversation this evening, um, but we won't have you being, be a voting member. Okay, um.
Rebecca, uh, since this, uh, since we've gone past this item, then I'm going to sign off. This is my.
Oh, that's fine, yep. Feel free to not stick around for the rest of the fun.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Paul. Haven't seen you in ages. Hi.
Yeah, hey, Mike.
Alright, um, so I will try and do this the correct way this time, um, and we will move on next to, um, a site plan review application from Integrity Ventures for drive-through beverage shop at the corner of Tenny Mountain Highway and Boulder Point Drive, PID number two one three dash zero zero two dash zero zero three. Reminder to the board that we saw a preliminary non-binding presentation from this applicant, um, either at our last meeting or our previous, um, public hearing in, um, March. Um, so, we, for real this time, um, Susan.
I'm gonna have to recuse myself from this as a conflict of interest.
Great, okay, thanks for letting us know. Alright.
Rebecca, do you want to appoint Mike in that case?
Oh, sure. Mike, you want to step in as a voting member for this one? Thanks, June. Um, alright, so, um, we will do, and we'll have the applicant, um, present this case, and I think for this one, we'll probably want to see some of the, um, some of the site plan during the completeness, um, presentation. I don't know if we need to see all a hundred and eleven or so pages of it for this. Um, there is, there's a lot of paperwork for this one. Um, but, um, if we can look, take a look at some of the plans that they're presenting for the completeness of the application. So, do we have a, um, representative of the applicant for this case?
Yes, uh, my name is Nick Schedule. I'm a, a professional engineer with DuBois and King, and we also have, um, Mike Pelletier, who's the representing the applicant.
Great. So, if, um, whoever's going to present the plans, um, go ahead and do so, um, focusing on any waivers they're asking from our site plan review regulations, so.
I think Rebecca might maybe wanted to go with a little overview. I'll let them decide how they wanted to.
That's great.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, just one minute, basically, looking to put in the Roma Joe's coffee drive-through at the corner of Tenny Mountain Highway and Boulder Point. Basically, mostly, like we talked about in the last meeting, a beverage only drive-through, uh, no public access or internal seating, anything like that. Uh, we employ about twenty employees, uh, the max that are in the store at any one point in time are four. And yeah, basically, Nick's going to go through, uh, the application that we've submitted for any questions that you have. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Uh, so you should be able to see my screen. I'm sharing the, um, what I used for the Butters map. Hopefully, you guys can see that.
Yep.
Okay, um, so the, the lot is on the corner of Boulder Point and Tenny Mountain Highway, Tenny Mountain Highway running east-west, Boulder Point north-south here. This is the highlighted lot. Um, and you can see the, uh, Butters list. Um, generally, the lot, uh, slopes from the, uh, south to the north and towards the east and drains to the, uh, northeast corner of the lot. We have provided all the, uh, topographic information on the existing site. Our proposed site plan is to, as Mike mentioned, create a, a drive-through, uh, commercial business uh, with a driveway off Boulder Point Road, um, as shown here on, on the drawings. Stormwater management will be handled in bio-retention facilities, low-lying areas, which will collect stormwater, store stormwater, and, uh, treat stormwater. There are wetlands on the site, which we are not disturbing as part of the project. Uh, we've provided six parking spaces, which meets the parking requirements. Uh, we have, uh, dumpster enclosure for, um, solid waste management on the site. The site will be connected to public water and sewer through the Plymouth Village Water and Sewer District. And it'll be served by underground electric utility, uh, from the existing pole that's at the, uh, northeast corner of the site. We did locate the driveway, uh, as, uh, a distance away from the intersection with Tenny Mountain Highway to provide, um, to minimize any impact to the intersection. We did provide a, uh, traffic analysis showing that there was, uh, no expected impact from, from traffic on the project. In terms of waivers, what we're requesting waivers for on this project is, um, showing, uh, septic and well locations because the, the project is, uh, going to be connected with the public water and sewer system. We don't, uh, have either septic or onsite, uh, well. And then, uh, requesting a waiver from the, uh, reproducible Mylar at this, um, with our initial submission, and, uh, we'd be happy to provide that either, uh, once we have a final approval set or, um, you know, I'm, I'm more familiar with doing that as an as-built drawing for record purposes after construction. So, um, uh, I don't know if that's enough detail at this point for, uh, acceptance of the, uh, application, but I can go into more detail during the public hearing.
Great, um, questions from the board about the completeness of this application?
I did have one question, and perhaps it's from the board or the applicant, or the applicant. Do we need clarification at this point if a gazebo is going to be built or if it's going to be just a picnic table?
So, in the conversations that we've had, uh, it, it's more like a picnic table or, uh, you know, an octagonal kind of a table arrangement for some outside seating.
Okay.
There may be, just to your point, um, we may look in some of our locations, we do do, uh, freestanding umbrellas and things like that, but, um, haven't gone so far as to actually build a gazebo or anything like that.
I, I think that's a good question at this time, John, too, because it does speak to what's on the plan and what it's representing, so that's good. Um, can we stop the screen sharing now so I can just see everybody? Thank you. Um, other questions from the, questions, comments about the completeness of the application from the board?
Uh, I, I can comment on the completeness. It seems that there were some questions that were raised by the town engineer, uh, in review, and, uh, I would like, I, I did see that the applicant had responded to those. Uh, so that makes me feel better about, you know, those questions being addressed. Uh, we may need to visit those, uh, during the public hearing, but I feel better about them being addressed already by the applicant.
I'm noting in our staff report that, um, according to the staff, when they reviewed this, um, it does, um, meet our standards for completeness. So, um, are there other, any comments from you, June, about the completeness of this?
No, I guess, you know, they, they did provide engineering details when the, when our town engine, so it, I would, uh, say that, Phil, that it is actually complete. When we have the engineer review, he may disagree with some of the details, and that's, so then, you know, you can accept it and then ask for adjustments based on, on the engineer's comments. Um, I guess you could ask for a gazebo instead of a picnic table, that kind of thing, too, uh, you know, and just for reference, but I would say it's complete.
Great.
Thank you, June. I, I will move, we accept the application as complete.
Rebecca.
Alright, um, I'll read the roll. John.
Hi.
Mary Ann. Phil.
Hi.
Carl.
Hi.
Mike Bouchard.
Hi.
Mike Ahearn.
Hi.
And aye from me. Okay, so application is complete, and I am now remembering that we are going to move on to another application at this time to review that application for its completeness, um, before we then move into the public hearing stage of the evening. Okay, um, so we also have a site plan review application from Three Lakes Properties for, in addition to an existing structure at ten Hamilton Way, PID number two one three dash zero one two dash zero zero four. Um, uh, I see Colby there. Hi, Colby. Um, so we will just have a presentation, um, from you in a moment. It would be helpful to maybe see some of this stuff. June, are you going to be sharing the screen in this case, or is this something, okay, um? Alright, Colby, go ahead. Just give us a brief overview of your project and anything you're looking for a waiver for, um, so go ahead. And you're still on mute.
Uh, any better?
That's better. We can hear you.
There we go. Hello, how are we doing tonight? Um, yeah, so I was working on my project out at ten Hamilton Way, the Stone Yard, I call it. Ultimately, what I'm trying to do is just, uh, create a little more space for retail items, um, which would be done by putting a dormer on the front of, uh, the building in conjunction with a hip roof or a shed roof on either side of it. There was, do, do you want to put that up, June, or do you want me to just keep talking? Anyways, so the idea was to put a dormer on the front, over the front door that I, it's existing on Tenny Mountain Highway side at this point. Uh, I don't think that that was the one, though.
This is the original plan, just for clarity, Colby. This was the originally planned that was submitted, and then it got revised based on the zoning. plan that was submitted, and then it got revised based on the zoning board. So you want to just talk about that, that this was originally they set the this area here was originally.
Yeah, so I was originally trying to go for variance of a foot and a half. The idea was I was trying to break up the long linear line of the building. So I was trying to have it stick out or extend past the roof line and but that was denied. So you can kind of see how it profiles the dormer in front of the post on the shed roofs. So I was just trying to give it a little bit more character definition, break up, you know, kind of a stale cardboard box of a building. And give it, you know, depth, but that foot and a half that I was asking for was denied. And so just sliding everything back to be on the same plane at twelve and a half foot setback. So everything that's within that blue area is that's within my setback for construction. So that is what I'm proposing to do right there. There will be mostly a post and beam structure for the dormers and will use post and beams, I believe, as well for the uprights for the roofs on either side. Just trying to give it some character, facelift the building a little bit, curb appeal. The the one of the reasons for doing this, we are Husqvarna dealership and want to, a place to store mowers, snow blowers, that kind of thing that is out of the weather, but also not sitting inside the building in a secure place. So that's kind of ultimately what I was trying to do.
Ask a clarifying question. So it it might just be a detailed question. So are you proposing to leave the step out but pull everything back? Or are you proposing to just pull the the bump out for the gable dormer back in line with the shed roof?
Correct. At this point, that's what I'm going to do. Yeah, so unfortunately, it's going to be on the same plane. I really did not want to do that, but the problem, the problem is, is if I leave the dormer at the twelve and a half foot setback and then come back another foot and a half. Then I have, you know, the eve, and then I got the post. I have now really shrunk that space significantly when you have a mower that's six, seven feet long and then need room for customers to walk in front of it. So I'm just going to have to live with it all on the same plane and hope that the dormer breaks it up a lot, which I think it still will and still give it more curb appeal and not one big massive roof.
Thank you for the clarification. Not that it matters, but I think aesthetically it'll it'll still look fine as long as the, if you got the gable dormer there, even if it doesn't project out.
Yeah, I hope so. I hope so. I mean, trying to give it more curb appeal, kind of just the effect that I'm trying to go with the property.
Yeah, I would, I approve of the those look and feel. I think you were right to give it more depth, Colby.
Great, thank you.
No questions about the completeness of the application? There are a handful of waivers that the applicant is requesting. But I do see on the planner report that these all are appropriate for this site. Any questions or comments about waivers from the board? Oh, and I just realized that Susan, maybe we'll just flip this back. Susan, you're back on for this one, right? And then, so Mike?
Yes, I would agree.
Okay. I'll do my best to keep track of that. All right, so June, any comments from you about the the requested waivers from the applicant?
You know, this is a it's an addition, you know, this the site's there, it's developed, we've seen, and I had in my staff report, there's been two thousand nine was really when the, we dug back into the files and there's a site plan for the original development of the site, which I think also tied to the the build-out of Hamilton Way. So the building's been there since shortly after that, or I'm not quite sure when it originally constructed. Two thousand nineteen, the board did approve already a a site plan for this site that included a small addition on the pergola kind of addition on the Hamilton Way side of the building. And in conjunction with that, also additional work and layout for materials across the street on Hamilton Way, which is also being used. So these two parts, it's really two parcels there that are kind of conjointly, you know, being used by the business. And so now it's kind of one more addition. So I think from talking to Colby, you know, he's got some plans there and and trying to work it out, but it is a little bit step by step. So we did talk a little bit about like what else is coming, but and for the purpose of this request, just for this addition, I think there is enough information for you to see. He's got a sketch of it. He's showing with the revision that, you know, he submitted after the zoning board meeting, it 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 would meet the requirements of setbacks. So I think when we get into, after you, if you decide to accept it, we can have a discussion about other things that might be happening in the future on the site, too, but for the purpose of this, we can move ahead.
Anything else from the board? Or motion? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I would just add, I remember when Dennis Prescott, the late Dennis Prescott, brought this application forward. And I gave him a lot of credit back then, making small lots affordable for someone to put their business on Tenny Mountain Highway, whereas the other lots were just priced out of their budget. And it was a tough go trying to see those lots get developed because they were small. And I think that anything the town of Plymouth can do to help Kobe utilize this lot, which is has some limitations, I think is just going to make the rest of the lots easier to develop. And I just, I give Kobe a lot of credit for what he's what he's done with those lots. And so I'm glad, I'm glad to see the planning board work with Kobe on this.
Thank you.
Any, anything else from the board? Motion to accept the application is complete.
I'll make the motion.
I will read the roll. John?
Hi.
Mary Ann? Carl?
Hi.
Phil? Mike Bouchard?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
And I from me. All right, application has been accepted as complete. Now we're going to move into our public hearings and deliberations on the applications we have before us today, except for the one that I jumped the gun on. So we'll go back to the site plan review application from Integrity Ventures for the drive-through beverage shop at the corner of Tenny Mountain Highway and Boulder Point Drive, PID number two-on-three dash zero-zero-two dash zero-zero-zero. So yeah, getting back into a little bit more of the meat of this project. Is there any questions for the board beyond the completeness stuff before we before I open up a public hearing? What do folks need to know?
I just wanted to say there was some really interesting stuff in that letter from Plymouth Square. But I'm not sure if a representative is here tonight, but I'd like to hear more about some of those issues.
We'll get to that in the public hearing in a second. If they are here, we certainly will acknowledge and try and summarize the the letter that they sent out to us. I guess my, if I'm interrupting somebody, I can only see a few of you on the screen, so please, planning board members speak up if you thank you, if you if you have questions or comments, but I was going to get right into the the engineer's letter.
And before you do that, I got another quick comment. I did reach out to the police department, highway department, fire department and Plymouth Village Water and Sewer. I did not hear back from police, but fire, fire department and highway had, were familiar with the site and had no, no comments really about it. And same with water and sewer, so got a little bit of a review and more in town about that. And you've seen the engineer's review, so.
Has the applicant had a chance to see the engineer's letter?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm not sure how much time you've had with that, but do you have any in response or comment about?
We do. We we provided a response to to June couple days ago. I haven't, I haven't heard anything back just because it's been short time, but all his comments were were reasonable, and I think we've addressed them all. We did provide, you know, there were four comments, basically information about the test pits. Test pits were collected by Stony Ridge Environmental and a copy is included. So just to show you guys, this is a different site plan version from when the test pits were done, but Tenny Mountain Highway is on the right-hand side. I'm not sharing my screen anymore, sorry. Should be able to see Tenny Mountain is on the right-hand side and Boulder Point kind of in the middle of the page. And we had, our site is down on the this corner of the site. So we had three test pits that were done here, provided that information. The other comments were regarding drainage areas. We did review the drainage areas and updated them. We did confirm that the pre and post-development stormwater model still resulted in no increased runoff under post-development conditions. But we did provide updated stormwater modeling information, which will show that. And then the last comment was regarding details. So we we have updated our detail sheet to include a little bit more information on end treatments for the guardrail. So how the guardrail will will be finished. And so we we provide kind of a standard detail, which is a US Department of Transportation standard where the guardrail kind of gets buried into the ground and anchored. That's a typical thing to do. And then we did update details to provide striping information for the handicap parking spaces. I did add a pipe bollard detail because we have a couple of bollards that are protecting the trash enclosure. And the parking lot pavement detail was another one he mentioned, which just shows the cross-section of how the parking lot gets built in terms of subbase materials and pavement thicknesses. So those were updated. And on the bottom of the sheet, I did add a marking detail for the crosswalk that just shows the spacing and the size of the crosswalk details, so. And then I can go into a little bit more detail about kind of just the site layout. You know, the entrance would be off of Boulder Point Road. We'd have more or less a single lane entrance at fifteen feet wide and and two-lane exit for either turning up Boulder Point or or down Boulder Point. Those lanes kind of reduced down to a standard twelve-foot width. And then, so cars coming in would queue up at the order window here. We'd have a bypass lane so that if if vehicles come in, they have the ability to bypass and and leave the site. Vehicles, once they've ordered, they go around the building and the pickup window would be on the opposite side of the building here. Again, there's bio-retention facilities located kind of spread out throughout the site so that we separate out the impervious and and capture it and infiltrate it. So there's one here, one at this island, one in the back corner and one in the front corner. In terms of the butters comments, we did review those. I spoke with the butter about them and had good conversation about snow storage. So we are providing snow storage for the site and snow storage that's outside of those bio-retention areas. We did, we do acknowledge that we don't want to store snow in those areas to reduce their capacity or impact their ability to filter in the future because we don't want to compact those areas with with snowbank. So we have plenty of of space along the edge of road before we get into those bio-retention facilities. On this, on this lower side, the exit lane coming out, we've got ten feet of of space, lawn space before the bio-retention, which that ten feet would support snow storage. Again, we have plenty of snow storage on the way in where we can imagine a plow coming in would would wing out on the right-hand side here. Snow storage before the parking and then a significant area of snow storage behind the parking here without having to utilize any of the bio-retention facility. Likewise, there's, there's plenty of storage between the state highway and the driveway, which would accommodate storage of snow. Particularly mostly for the state highway, but would also support some storage from the site. You can see the dumpster location at the top of the site, so trash pickup could can access the site. Front load the dumpster, back out and then come around and and exit the site. There was some discussion in the butters letter about proximity of the dumpster to wetlands. You can kind of, you can see the wetland delineation on this plan. The grayish lines that that are shown. And, you know, I would acknowledge that, you know, we are in proximity to the wetlands, so but the dumpster location is really as as a best site for us in terms of access for trash removal, access for employees to you know, monitor the trash and 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 keep keep the site clean. We'd really prefer to have, you know, minimal distance from the the employee doorway to the to the dumpster as well, just security reasoning. We do show four pole-mounted sightlights in the four corners of the the property where my cursor is here, over near the dumpster, again, for security at the front of the site, you know, facing inward. And then in the this corner closest to the sign, all those lighting would be downward cast, dark sky compliant lights, which you know, would would really be, I'd say just minimal lighting for for security and site safety reasoning. In terms of trash that's generated and nuisance from potential wildlife, for the most part, the trash that's generated from the facility is is more or less packaging and not really organic food waste. This, this applicant does have other franchises of Aroma Joe's that they you know, have a system worked out where they work with local trash hauling vendors to to as well as trying to compost things like their coffee grounds and any kind of organic food scraps or or waste from the site. So they prefer to do composting and and work with a vendor to get rid of their food waste in that way, the the small amount that they generate rather than than using the dumpster. That being said, you know, they work with with trash vendors that are familiar with dealing with wildlife. And if it became an issue, you know, they would address it. They do have checklists that the employees would be responsible for monitoring trash on the site in terms of, you know, if there was an occurrence of something getting into the trash, that would be addressed immediately in terms of cleanup. I did speak with our landscape architect who we worked with on the plantings within the bio-retention areas. There was a comment about trying to provide maybe some larger like trees that would provide protection for songbirds from raptors. And in speaking with the landscape architect, the shrubbery that's already on the the planting plan is actually a really good refuge for those songbirds. It is a berry, you know, produces berries, so it should attract songbirds. That's kind of the intent is to, you know, attract that kind of wildlife to the site. And it would provide that refuge without needing additional plantings. So we felt comfortable about that. We did also talk about and and you know, potentially doing a little bit of lining of the bio retention area with some boulders along there just for a little bit of added protection and and separation between what would be bio retention area and snow storage. So again, you know, in terms of drainage for the site. You know, on on the slight slopes from the right hand side of my page to the left, working down Boulder Point Road. And you can kind of follow these arrows, gets into this wetland, follows the wetland and then runs along a ditch between our property and the butter, the Plymouth Square, which is the butter who had the comments. And then drains to one of the other comments was reference to a existing 18 inch culvert, which runs underneath Tenny Mountain Highway. And that's a culvert owned and maintained by the New Hampshire DOT. So both our properties will ultimately drain to that to that culvert. You know, I I will say as part of our site development, you know, we're not in increasing any runoff from our site. However, you know, we we plan to work with our butter and try and work together to to keep DOT honest about doing their maintenance and avoiding any kind of blockages which might impact both our properties. So we've, we've reached we've sent since since getting the butters note letter, we've made contact with DOT just to express our, you know, desire to make sure that they're maintaining that culvert and they've they've responded in in a positive manner in terms of, you know, taking responsibility for that. So. What else can I say? In terms of the architectural look of the building, we did provide architectural elevations for the property for the proposed building. So I'll just, you know, note that it's it's in terms of materials, it'll be a thin brick facade on the bottom of the building and then a fiber cement siding on the on the upper portion of the building. I don't know if there's any any other questions in terms of that, there will be some wall signage on the building. And then the only other signage we're showing on the site that's not already existing, there is an existing sign located here, which will take advantage of and and add our add our site to that to that community sign. And then we showed two kind of whoops, whoops, two, what did I do? Two signs at the entrance and exit, which would be kind of this type of sign. Here. Approximately three foot by four foot in height.
Are the signs illuminated?
No.
How about the ones on the building?
Mike, can you answer that?
Yep, the ones on the building are illuminated and they're illuminated basically until about a half hour after we close.
And presumably internally eliminated?
Yes, exactly. Right.
This is an example of the dumpster enclosure enclosure that we have for the site.
Is that over six feet tall?
No, it's not over six feet. It would be six feet.
Perfect.
Other questions from the board?
I've been jumping in right away. I hope you don't mind.
I don't mind at all. Anyone else?
So just the impact of traffic on Tenny Mountain Highway?
Yeah, we we did a traffic analysis for the project. So, so the coffee shop has is expected to have a peak hour traffic impact of 96 trips. And the way that those peak hours line up with the Tenny Mountain Highway peak hours, the actual increase during peak hours for Tenny Mountain Highway is between 28 trips in the morning and 32 trips in the afternoon. Peak hours. So there's an AM peak and a PM peak. So when you compare those 28 and 32 trips compared to the existing peak, it's very, you know, it's it's negligible impact. So basically, our our traffic transportation professional who who did the analysis identified no real impact from this site on Tenny Mountain Highway.
If I can just add to that, and your driveway is presumably long enough to accommodate the amount of traffic you'd have in there at any given point that is not going to be spilling out onto.
Correct, yes.
And I would just add about the traffic, Mike Vignali, I did ask him to look at it and he basically, he didn't really address it because he really didn't have any comments on it and felt that it was reasonable. So but that was something I had asked the applicant to make sure that they told us one way or another what they thought the impacts would be. So.
Other questions from the board before we start talking about the public hearing?
Can you clarify, what's the area of the wall signs? Is that on the plan? In terms of square footage?
Yeah.
I can, I can look that up and get back to you in a second if you want to keep going through other questions.
Anything else from the board?
I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking at the staff report right now and I'm trying to see where we normally have parking spaces based on the square footage of the building. And so with six parking spaces that they mentioned, I'm assuming that's mostly for their employees.
So like this was, this is kind of a slightly unusual use in some ways because there's no indoor seating. That was told that that's what we were told. So yes, there'd be a, and Mike Pelletier can can probably speak to this, but I believe it's a couple of employees at a time there. And they do provide the additional parking spaces would be if somebody wanted to come and park and walk up to the building and get their food, their beverage and snack, they can take that back to their car or sit at the picnic table or but basically it's it's designed to pretty much be just an automobile accessed facility. So that's one reason why they provide that drive around lane in case somebody gets there and the line's too long, then they can still kind of get passage around the building and there is adequate stacking space for it. So.
Yes, that's exactly right, June. So Mike, basically, like June indicated, there is no public access for people to come in and sit or even stand and wait around. We have, most of the time, we have two people on. If there are very busy times and every store is a little bit different, so I'm not sure how a Plymouth location would behave. But our peak times, we would have up to four employees. So the parking spaces are really meant for them. Our stores get, I would say, minimal foot traffic, if you will. And generally, those are stores that are in a more, I guess, congested area, if you can, you know, imagine like sidewalks and things like that where there's a lot of foot traffic, we will get some a fair amount of people coming to the walk up window. But, you know, other than the folks adjacent to us in those offices and condos, I'm not sure how much foot traffic we would generate on Boulder Point. But it is conceivable that someone could drive up and just, you know, want to stretch their legs and park in one of the spots and go to a picnic table or a an Adirondack chair.
So I did look at the zoning ordinance on this and we require for restaurants, one space per four seats, but there's no seats. So. So then you kind of.
Foot?
No, they do it by usage, but per force in every, so assuming a table's got like four seats, and I guess the idea is that, you know, one car would come and take the table. And so then when there's, when, so it doesn't really fit that. And that's where you start, but it doesn't, because it doesn't have seating. So then there is this kind of catch all for parking analysis is this other uses adequate spaces to accommodate customers, patrons, employees must be provided as determined by the planning board under its site plan review process. So based on this kind of a discussion, we understand what the, how the site would be used, number of employees, kind of how it would use. It appears in my opinion that there would be adequate parking there.
So my second part, and thank you for that answer. That was excellent. I I see that as a, it's a great spot for them, knowing that we have the soldiers on home just up the road that the intent was when they talked about building those condos up there was that they could walk to Walmart and now they could walk to this business as well. So I've noticed a couple other, and this really may not fall into the into the discussion of a planning board, but driven by the one in Laconia, Roma Joes, and the one in Osipie. And I'm just curious, have you had any aroma Joes that have ceased being an aroma Joe? And then what is your use for the building after if it really has no accommodations for parking? It's kind of limited. Not that it affects Plymouth's taxes because we get our taxes whether there's someone there using it or not. But I'm just kind of looking at it from the applicant's point of view. What is your plan should it close?
So great question. There are currently 75 aroma Joes that are open and operating. In the history, which we just celebrated our 20th anniversary, in the history of aroma Joes, one location has opened and then subsequently closed. And that was basically in a college library at King State. So it wasn't a standalone building or anything like that. And basically, the the franchisee couldn't operate when the school was not in session. So during the summer hours and really wasn't financially worth it. Other than that, every aroma Joe that has been opened is still operating today. And we've had, I would say exceptionally healthy years, especially in the last two years. So being a drive through operation, as you can imagine, especially with everything that's gone on in the last 12 months. Restaurants have had to close, malls have had to close, things like that. And people still want to get out, they still want to treat themselves. So we've had very strong operations in the last 12 months and the company is poised to really take off a lot more than even in the past. So I don't see running the demographics, running the traffic, running the, you know, the visibility, the ease of access, everything about this site suggests it's going to be a strong site. And I don't see any danger of it closing or shutting down or not being successful. I have four other locations. And they're a combination of, you know, a couple of them are in our top 10, a couple of them are lower performing, but still financially viable. And I think Plymouth is going to be somewhere in between that if I had to guess, just based on everything. But I think it's going to be a good, strong location. I'm not sure if that answers your question or not, but.
So I, Mike, I would just add, or there's a little planning board too. Just remember that if there is, if say aroma Joe's closed, isn't it change, it goes through a change of use, then site plan, assuming our regulations stay roughly the same, then a change of use would trigger a new site plan, which then would require more parking if this was going to be have something, you know, different perhaps, you know, so we'd look at it at that point.
And if I could add too, the the model that Aroma Joes pursues when a franchisee opens a new location is that if for some reason, so forget the location, whether or not the location is is successful, if I fail, so if I manage it poorly, if I don't do what I'm supposed to do and you know, abide by all the policies and procedures that we have, the Aroma Joe's headquarters would come in and take over that location. So that happened in one town in upstate Maine. Where the the franchisee opened the store was doing well, but they decided they didn't want to be a franchisee anymore. And so basically headquarters came in, take the take over that location. And then they do an active search for someone to take it over. And if no one takes it over, Aroma Joes hangs on to it. So it's in their best interest to make sure, you know, from a brand perspective, that the location continues to operate in accordance with their policies and procedures.
I only asked that question because when Home Depot and Lowe's were both coming in, someone on the planning board asked, well, what happens if you go out of business, the economy turns? And someone replied pretty quickly, well, you'd have a pretty nice facility for town works or fire department or something because you got a pretty great spot. That would be so small compared to the building. And that that would be my only question, but obviously, you know, you you answered the question well, and I'm ready to move on to other questions for the chair.
I just want to point out that I just got a message from Rebecca. She's got kicked off because of lost her internet. So maybe Phil, could you step in his chair until she gets to join us again and maybe move on to the opening the hearing and we, I know we have a couple of butters that we've gotten letters from, one came today. And I think Richard Esposito is here and also James Propsey. So I see them here. So maybe they would like to speak, but you also have the letters from them because you have them, hopefully you don't have to necessarily read them all in detail, but they can summarize their concerns too. And anybody else?
No. So I think it's good for the board to have some general discussion, but I do think it's important to open the public hearing and solicit public comment. So it being 7:38, I'm going to open the public hearing on Aroma Joes and ask if any members of the public would like to speak to the application in front of the board, either for against or just ask questions. If, if you're a member of the public and you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself or raise your hand somehow. Get our attention. My my preference would be to have the, oh, James, do you want to go?
Yes. I think John Crist mentioned that he might have some questions for me. I have two other items that I've I've thought about in listening in to the questions that have been presented. I had a nice talk, I confirmed that with Nick Skagel about this location. What I forgot to mention to him was that we do have our main water line, which is a two inch copper line that runs in that drainage ditch on the side adjacent to our building. But down five feet that runs between the two properties and then it runs entirely around my premises to come in where the penny saver is. So that's, that's where we get all our our water from. As far as the parking issue, we, this never came up with Nick, but I've been to the Tilton location. I've met people at the Tilton location. When it's raining, instead of being outside and sitting on the fence that's there, we have met and gone into each other's vehicles or somebody comes into my vehicle or vice versa, depending upon the situation. So people do meet and 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 that's how they they transpire, that transpire that. So either the picnic table or you know, the extra two parking spaces might be used. Any, any other questions? I think, oh, that. Any, any other questions? I I think, oh, that I I think they've addressed a lot of the the plantings. I was not familiar with the certain type of erroneous that was specified, but that seems to be a good pick. The drainages is of our our greatest concern. Then I'm pleased to see that there's no extra runoff on even a hundred year storm. But blocking of that culvert is a serious consideration for us.
I'm going to see the chair back to Rebecca. She's prepared to take this. Rebecca, are you, are you capable of taking over his chair at this point? Rebecca? So I don't hear Rebecca responding, so I will continue in this role unless she wants to take over. Thank you for the comments. So is Mr. Esposito on? Would he like to speak to the letter that was submitted?
Yes, please, if you can hear me.
Yep, go ahead.
I, yes, thank you. So this is actually a concern because we have a pre existing problem. And it it sounds great with the songbirds and all, and they're they're not going to create any more runoff. But we have a serious problem that that whole hill there sends all of its water across our way. You can see hundreds of feet of culvert lined with rocks to send down huge amounts of water. That has been a problem for us ever since that development. We have spent personal money to try to mitigate these problems. We have made great lengths to not put snow in the culvert to great expense. We have personally been out there digging away at ice and snow to keep our business from flooding. So I understand this is more of a pre existing problem, but it cannot be exacerbated. What do you think? I'm good.
In in terms of exacerbating the problem, we've, we have provided a onsite drainage so that any change in the land use in terms of changing from grass or wooded to pavement. That's accounted for in the storage within the bio retention areas. In addition, those will provide treatment for the stormwater. And as was mentioned before, we're we're not increasing the runoff as part of this development. So you know, the the hope would be that that, you know, we have no net impact on on runoff as a result of this development.
That sounds great. Thank you. Now, though, we still have an existing problem and DOT has proven quite useless and not really responsible for our still existing issue. So I was considering if there was a way that this entire development and not aroma Joes somehow help with mitigation of this existing problem.
I believe that scope of this hearing, but I would suggest that if you have concerns, I I think the only my recommendation would be to take your concern, your request to the board of selection. Unless June, do you have?
Yeah, this is a, you know, it's it's good to hear about these problems. You know, when you have a site development like this, our requirements are to look at the site and, you know, and the surroundings around it. But you know, the goal of the engineering of this site and the drainage is to not make anything worse than, and if anything, make it better. So the drainage analysis, and I'm not an engineer, but you know, there's a whole modeling process that Nick's done. And then we did have our towns engineer review it. He did have some questions and they ran that model again to ensure that, you know, based on the soils and the test pits and calculations that, you know, there's no increase, you know, in runoff for standard kind of design and storm events for this. So, you know, they do it at different storm intervals and I have to look back and see what they are. So, you know, it it meets the standards that the town has and it's not really this applicant's responsibility to fix an existing problem. So they're responsible to certainly not make it any worse. And that's what they're showing that they have done. So it's unfortunate and I, you know, certainly respect what we're hearing from the butters, but again, it's it's, this isn't necessarily a way to correct something that's existing as a problem.
Yeah, I would have. I would agree that we even have that same type of problem to a smaller scale on Main Street in Plymouth and it just involves the state being aware and and playing a bigger role to take care of any problems before it accumulates too much that the water won't go under the road. And again, we have that on North Main Street. And some of these pipes were were kind of old and probably undersized at one time. And I think it's just going to take more awareness by the state on that one pipe. And I'm sure there are, there are things that they can do at the inlet that could alleviate some of the problems, maybe not all of them, but more than probably what's happened now.
And if I may, you know, if this project is approved, I mean, I hear loud and clear what Mr. Crosspit or Cropsey and Mr. Esposito are saying. I'd be happy to advocate on behalf of, you know, this problem as well with the DOT. I know we've already on the project reached out. Like Nick suggested earlier and did receive a response from them, but anything that we can do to help, you know, make sure that the DOT appreciates the concerns and the issues that have been going on even previous to us, we would be definitely on board to voice our concerns as well.
Are there, are there any other members of the public who would like to comment on the aroma Joe's application at this time? Hearing none. Are there any? Is, is there anyone who would like to add any other comments from the public, even if you've spoken already? Mr. James, go ahead.
Uh, I I did want to mention or reiterate from my letter that since I've sent the letter, I copied my tenants and I have several tenants, quite a few that would prefer to walk there rather than drive. And they they do expect to, they were ecstatic, Mr. Pelletier, that a Roma Joes was going to go. And and I I have problems with Starbucks. It's a little too caustic for me, so I do prefer Roma Joes myself. Which is why I mentioned that I have been to the Tilton one. And I do appreciate also your your willingness to work with us, the Mister, and this is Esposito as well. So what, maybe we should reconvene at some point in time. Open to, open the conversations with you. Thank you.
Absolutely. Be happy to do that.
All right, I'm going to do last call for public comment. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at seven forty nine and ask members of the board. Is there further discussion at this point, or would we like to take action on this application?
If if I could ask, if if something does happen with pedestrian access to the site, is that something we would include as a condition of approval that we'd have more information about that or? Or did not?
We would want to hear in review if there are going to be pedestrian access. June, what would you think? Do you want to comment on this?
So just, I just wanted to point to the board and maybe on, go back to the, if you have, can find the staff report. I know there was tons of materials for this meeting. But I did on the second page, a list of recommended conditions of approval. So I can just kind of summarize those, you know, if you feel comfortable with that. The first one being that the comments from the towns engineer needs to be addressed and you know, making sure that all the changes were done. So they've submitted a, you know, documentation to address those comments. Mike Vignali has not had a chance to respond yet, but I'm trusting that that one will be checked off, but we should still keep that as a condition to just make sure that everything that Nick has done is is satisfied by Mike's review of it. And we do have funding from Mr. Pelletier for this town engineer review. I just want to make that clear too. He gave us money. We're holding an escrow to to pay our engineer for this. Okay. So then any comments from department heads? We had none. So that one's kind of, you know, we can, don't have to worry about that. It's already been taken care of. We got that information back. I did put in here something about saying, suggesting that if a walkway between this parcel and the next, you know, the one next door was to be designed and developed, I think it is a good idea, you know, that it should be in a mutually agreeable location. I think they just haven't had a chance to really get together to talk about it, but you know, wanting to make sure that it it doesn't have any wetland impacts. And there is that ditch there between the two, so it might need some kind of a bridging or something like that. And so I think you could do a conditional approval that would allow, you know, for an update, maybe a walkway design and a maintenance agreement for it by perhaps, you know, I suggested late May for review at our June seventeenth meeting. So that gives them some time. But however, allow them, if they so choose to to go ahead with the rest of the site work. So it's not delayed by a walkway. That was my thought on that. And then other pieces I had was, we would want this type of, even though it's not a big site, there's enough going to be happening, enough dirt work moved, enough drainage in the wetlands there. And we'd want to have a development agreement, you know, that we have a standard agreement. We've talked about that in the last few months. That would include all these conditions of approval. We would want escrow accounts and escrow agreement set up for some periodic review by their towns engineer. I don't think the construction review will be that extensive, but probably a couple of days. I, you know, I haven't had a chance to get Mike's thoughts on that, but we would, you know, base on the last much larger development, you know, I think it was a couple thousand dollars, if I remember right. You know, for four or five days of review. So it may not be that much, but, you know, posting a bond or letter of credit for any kind of site reclamation restoration, again, because of the proximity of the roadways there, Boulder Point's a town road, you know, it's got some utility work. That would be standard kind of thing to request. Just at the end, make sure that we get as built plans within thirty days. This is something I'm discovering. We haven't always been so good about. And then, you know, maybe ask the applicant how long they're collecting this site development to take. You know, I suggested maybe conditional approval until December thirty first, twenty twenty two. So give them, you know, kind of two construction seasons, although I'm guessing they want to go sooner. And then authorize the board to chair, authorize the chair to sign the final plans. And I want to have one other update as we were sort of thinking here, maybe providing a final paper copy of the plans prior to construction. You know, we've got a few changes from our engineers, you know, once this walkway gets thought through and then so we know what's what's supposed to be happening there and and our engineer would require that anyway. So I want to make sure we get the copy of that stuff in a full size and eleven by seventeen in digital. So that's a long list, but I just had that on the staff report and I just wanted to kind of let you review that for you.
So is there an action from the board on how we'd like, how anyone would like to move forward? Rebecca, are you in a position where you'd want to take over chair? Should I continue?
I think you should continue. I do have one comment about the about the conditions. I'm, I'm good with all of those, except the one about the walkway. I wonder if we want to say if a walkway between the subject will be constructed, just so, you know, to give them the option of, so it's not part of the plan that a walk or part of the approval that the condition is that there will be a walkway.
I think that would be our preference, just because we haven't had enough opportunity to to be certain that we can make the walkway work with the grades. There is a wetland that we would have to span. And then you know, there may be just a little bit of surveying, just to get a couple of spot elevations for where we would tie in on the where the two trails would meet and then just you know, there's some, some logistical stuff in terms of, you know, we would work to our property line and and the butter would work to to the the common property line and just making sure that those work were certainly agreeable to to make the trail work, but and it would be good for business, it sounds like, but it would be helpful if it wasn't so much a condition that we have to put the trail in, but it's that it's a a nice thing to have.
Phil, is there a middle ground that we could say a good faith effort to try and make a trail work?
I think that
as a condition, I don't know if you can say that as a condition, you just leave it out at that point. But it would be kind of nice to have that good faith effort on both sides.
Ultimately, it's not enforceable.
Yeah.
I think from our perspective, just making sure that if one is put in that it's it is something that's agreeable to both sides and then that that where we get a, you know, an update on the location and all that stuff exactly as it's stipulated in the in the planner report.
I think that makes sense. And then, I mean, that would give you guys an opportunity to comment on material of construction in terms of what it's made out of and and things like that. That's fine.
Phil? One thing that we've done, we've required businesses along Tenney Mountain Highway that can make a connection through, I forget what the terminology is, for cars to go back and forth. They don't have to go on to back onto Tenney Mountain Highway. In that way, we've made stipulations conditional. So I don't think saying a walkway is that far off from there, especially you don't want to be walking on Tenney Mountain Highway if you can help it. So, but yeah, a good faith effort works for me as long as someone's not putting a fence up, a chain link fence, you know, one month after you get your approval. That's all I'm concerned about. Give it a chance, let it happen if it can.
I I'm still getting used to our zoning ordinance and one of the questions I brought up earlier was regarding wall signs. And June, maybe if you have a moment, do you have a, can you look at page twenty six of our zoning ordinance? Under permitted signs, four oh eight point five. It appears we limit the size of wall signs to three square feet. Am I? Perhaps. I don't, I don't know if June, if you're familiar with any other aspects of our zoning ordinance that would apply in this situation, or are we going to be requiring a variance from that? Depending on what's included on the site plan.
So I did look at this, Phil, and it's, this is a little bit misleading the way it's like many things in the zoning ordinance. I just had to get, I just had to say that, but that the display area, the maximum in this zone, highway, I think industrial, what is it? High industrial commercial, it's three square per, three square feet per linear foot of the building.
Okay.
Okay. So it's not just three square feet. You have to look at this. So that's where it kind of is, it's proportional. That allows it to be proportional. And I did look at their sign plan and it seemed to fit. So when we get more exact dimensions, when we get the building permit, we'll take a little closer look at that and they have to bring it down or a little bit than they they they'll have to. So it would come more at the building. I mean, at this point, it's kind of a rough guide and showing where it is, but it looked to my, by my calculation and scaling it off, it looked fine.
Thank you for the clarification on that. I was that's why I let in with a disclaimer that I'm not exactly, I'm still getting used to the zoning ordinance. So yeah, three square feet, linear foot is is certainly different than three square feet. So.
We're all getting used to the zoning ordinance.
So I would like a motion from the board to either continue the public hearing if we feel that additional public input is needed, or we can consider an approval with conditions.
I'd like to move to approve with the enumerated conditions. To repeat all of those.
All right. So we have John made the motion and Michael seconded to move with the conditions that were read by June earlier. And and they were distributed via print to the planning board as as part of the materials, so we can include those in the record.
With the amended language about the if on the walkway?
Yes.
Yeah.
Phil, can I add one more thing to that? Before we
So there's a motion and a second on the table. Are you
Yeah, so I'll wait.
amend the motion?
No. Well, the only reason I would want to speak before before we do the discussion of the two motions is that we had as part of a condition, when we had Walmart and the connection between Walmart and Boulder Point Drive, that connection almost didn't happen. And the only reason why it did finally happen after a few, after I don't know how many years was because we had that conditional condition there. We, the select board, I believe, kind of forced that to happen. It made it happen because it was a condition. So I appreciate what John brought up. I can also understand both sides doing their good faith effort, but it's something the the planning board may want to hash out for another few minutes while this, while this is on the table before we vote.
I'm okay with that.
Well, yeah, I mean, we have a motion and a second. That doesn't mean the motion can't be amended. So if if there's an amendment to the motion, why don't we continue a discussion until someone feels like they have a workable amendment that they would like to move?
I guess I'm just wondering who determines what a good faith effort is? If that's one of the conditions. So I just, to me, I would this a little more subjective than I would like to see in a, in a condition on a, on an approval.
Could it relate to this should be done unless there is some issue with the wetlands and drainage that would prevent it? And I don't know if that's possible to to define clearly enough that it's not also not really binding.
How about I'm reading what I wrote in my staff report, something that says like a walkway between the subject property and neighboring property. When the neighbor has asked for this, that's the reason why I put it on there. A neighboring walkway between the two properties shall be investigated, designed and designed in a mutually agreeable location that minimizes wet, when impacts, you know, a maintenance agreement will be worked out between the two parties. And the planning board requests an update, you know, by May 27th or review at the June 17th meeting. So there's sort of a timeline on it too. And then at that point, if there's some design, you know, we can add something that says, you know, if design can't be worked out, the board will discuss on the 17th of June. That's not very short and succinct. So I do, I do think we should can keep that thing though, that says I had in that this should not delay the start of other aspects of the project.
We actually have a motion. Do we want to, Mr. Krups, do you want to comment?
If if I may, and Nick can vouch for this as well. I believe all of the wetlands in that drainage ditch granted they're manmade. All of that is on Plymouth Square property on my side. And I'm on the Conservation Commission in Tilton. And in particular, our ordinances are mirror the states. I do not know about Plymouths. But if nothing is actually in the wetlands, but with goes from bank to bank, it is possible to have a bridge in place. Then the question becomes, you know, maintenance on on the other side. I believe the bridge ends up entirely on my property. If that was going to happen, I do not think any culvert is recommended. I would not do that. And I don't know if the Espositos are still on, but I would, I would not do anything like that. So perhaps that will help clarify. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second in front of the planning board to accept the the conditions as drafted and submitted by June. Is there an amendment to that? Are we voting on that unamended? All right. Hearing no discussion. I will call for a vote on the conditional approval with conditions as stated. Let's do this in order. Rebecca?
Abstaining.
Actually, I have to ask for clarification. Was Mike seated for this or Susan seated?
I'm seated for this one.
Okay, Mike?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
And myself, I will vote I as well. So the conditional approval is passed. And that that moves us beyond to the next agenda item. Thank you all for your your comments and your presentation. Look forward to getting a cup of coffee in the near future.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the conversation.
Rebecca, do you want me to continue or do you want to take over?
I'm good to go now that I am. I don't know what happened before my internet. I do know my internet died, but I don't know why. So I am here. And I am good to continue. So thank you, Phil. All right. So now we have a site plan review application from Three Lakes Property for the addition to the existing structure, structure at 10 Hamilton Way, PID number 213-012-004. Thanks for hanging in there, Colby.
Rebecca, is this where I
All right.
Is this where Sue comes back on?
Susan comes back on. Yep.
Okay.
Thanks. All right. So back to this application. Is there anything further that we need to look at for this? Or or June, is there any more history that you think would be helpful? Or information as we move forward with this?
Yes, I guess. Sorry, I'm shifting my piles. And, you know, I did not scan in the original site plan for this property, but when I, I went out on, I think it was Monday or Tuesday morning and met with Colby at the site and we talked about a few things that I would want him to maybe further explain, but I can hold on, what am I going to do here? Share my screen? Go back to, whoops. That's, that's not the right one either to hear. Okay, residential. Sorry, this is the revised site plan that he submitted. So when we, so while this is about this site, you know, the the development of this blue colored area that is no longer being proposed to be in the setback, it's a pretty straightforward. You know, part of this had, I think, a little bit of a walkway or something on the side. So it's you know, it's not really adding much impervious surface, that kind of thing. So it fits just within this, exactly within the setback. The dotted line here is the setback because this lot is an odd shaped lot. So he's kind of, he's right at that setback line. All right. We did discuss about, yeah, so he took the original site plan drawing here. So this is a little bit different. I can blow this up a little. So the building is here, you know, this addition is going to go in here and he has suggested a few other items to this site as well as the other property over here. However, we're not really, we're not talking about this property tonight. So I do just, because we talked about, you know, the planning board looks not just necessarily at you know, one addition at a time, we should be looking, the board should be looking at the site and kind of just a review of what's going on there. So in the conversation, he talked about wanting to add a I guess, and I can let him talk about this a little bit more, but some different features here, some plantings, a light pole is the, the orange Xs, some plantings are the blue Xs, is sort of some general areas. On the original site plan for this property, there was actually supposed to be some plantings on this side of the building, which never happened. Or if they did, they got taken out by snow sliding off the metal roof. You know, the parking, there's a couple of different things. The dumpster location was supposed to originally be over here, but he's had to move it because of access. You can't really have the dumpster be able, there wasn't enough space in there. We talked about the paving because there's actually some, some pervious pavement through here that is there. You know, it's not a big site, as Mike mentioned, because it drops off and there's actually a wetlands area in here. So again, he's applying for the addition here. So and he also wants to have a fenced in secure area for some storage of some shrubs and other materials for sale, but I think it's got some setback issues. So we've emailed them about those zoning requirements. So I just wanted the board to be aware that we might need to see some more refinement as future development works out, because I think this plan is a little bit lacking in some details in terms of just what these plantings are going to be, but at least he gave us sort of an idea of some things that he's looking at and you know, putting things in the setback area, especially with a fence, because that becomes a structure if it's over, I think it's four feet. The problem, we can't really do that in the setback area. So that's, you know, again, we don't have the application for that.
If it was four feet, if it's four feet, is it an issue then?
Excuse me, if it's over.
If I built something at four foot, is it an issue?
I'd have to go back and look. I'm sorry. I can look at the email I sent you. But yeah, I think you, so that's where we don't have the details of what that fence is, you know, area is. And the application again was more for the addition. So I think the board's got a couple of options here. You know, I know he wants to get going on this. It's just, you know, consider what he's asked for. We have the information for it meets the setbacks. He's given the drawings of what it's going to look like. And this additional pieces might require another trip back here in the future to have more of a you know, have, you know, I was hoping to not have him have to do this if we had a little bit more complete application, but I would suggest you remind the applicant that in the future to maybe look again at both of these properties with a little bit more detail about some of these features he wants to add in at some point, which might be whenever that is. I don't know what the timeline is. Does that help make sense? He had a little bit more.
So if we were to move forward with, I mean, obviously we're going to do a public hearing. But if we were to move forward with approval this evening, could we do something that, you know, to say that, you know, this is for just, I mean, we know that it's for just the addition onto this building, any subsequent development? Whether it's a greenhouse or a light or a fence, all get run by town staff for filtering it back to the planning board as necessary. Something maybe that's a little more articulate and clear, but something along those lines.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's up to you. If you're comfortable with what he's sort of putting there and wanting to get in general allowed that, you know, without much detail, then that's fine. I mean, you know, we usually require some detail about lighting and what types of plantings and but it's really, it's really up to you guys. So but again, the application was for the addition and that's what it really got noticed. Also, I realize so he's since then brought in a revision as based on the conversation I had with him. So give him credit for that. I don't want to, you know, but again, you're asked for that addition, which is, you know, I think more crucial for him to get going on right now.
What do other folks think?
I think it's great that June has the resources to answer general questions. I think if we should also encourage any anyone with questions about potential future developments that they can engage in the conceptual consultation or design review stages, which are non-binding discussions with the planning board. So, you know, if you have thoughts in the future that you want to bring to the planning board and discuss, we can certainly kind of go through those and what would be required, but June, June can do a lot of that for you without all of us, if that's more expedient. I was looking at fences and I think strictly that is a corner lot because it has frontage on two roads. So it has two front yards, but I think you could make a good case for a special exception if you wanted to do. If you wanted to call that a side lot, because I mean, you're, there's a good division between Tenny Mountain Highway and that property in the ditch. I wouldn't really, I mean, there's a wouldn't really call it a frontage there. But anyway, that's, that's an aside. I think the proposal for the, for the building expansion on this is very reasonable for the use. And I don't really see any issues outstanding. So I'll make the motion that we approve the site plan.
Can you hold that until we do a public hearing?
Oh yeah, I forgot to do that. I'm glad nobody seconded. Thank you.
All right, hold on to that. I will and board members, we'll have other opportunity to comment as well, but I am going to open the public hearing on this application at 8:15. Is there anybody that would like to speak of any nature about this application? Okay, seeing no public comments, I will close the public hearing again at 8:16. Bring it back to the board. Any further comments, questions? Before we let Phil do the honors? Susan?
I think what Colby's doing there is really adding to the whole area. And I think the addition that he's asking for is really acceptable. The fence that he wants to do, I think, business wise and what it's going to look like. I think everything he's doing is really very well done. And I support him 100%.
Thank you.
Without, without making my motion yet, I will say that I do think that making the building more welcoming to the public will probably increase your, your business and you know, it'll be good for the property. It'll be good for the area to get some more commercial development and draw more people into that area. So I support it in general.
Anything else from the board? Phil, your motion perhaps with, are there any conditions we need to attach to this? I think I gave a long
I forget what we had. Did June, did you have recommended conditions on this?
I don't remember.
The planner report here and it basically, it says that we should request the applicant to explain proposed changes. Here should be so it said the recommend the planning board request an amended and up-to-date site plan for the entire site that clearly shows how the site is currently laid out, parking area, pavement area, dumpster location, all signage, landscaping and other site features. And we, what you showed us is basically, go ahead, June.
Yeah. So I wrote the staff report on Thursday or Friday, sent it out and then I met with Colby and it was Monday or Tuesday. Maybe you remember Colby, which day I don't remember. But yeah. And so then, yeah, and then he Tuesday afternoon, I think it was, sent me the revisions that I just showed you that are kind of, you know, hand drawn. So I think if you wanted to go ahead and allow him to consider the fencing provided is within the zoning requirements and that extra lighting and plantings, that's, that's your decision. If you want to allow that amended plan. Or if you want him to come back with more detail about that in the future. But again, the addition, this sort of got, you got sort of different stages here. I think the addition to the building, you know, it sounds like we're all pretty, every, I'm not, I don't vote, but you're all are pretty comfortable with that. I think it's the other pieces that he's, that we went over tonight that I sent out to you guys a couple of days ago.
We're talking the fenced enclosure and the blue and red Xs?
Yes. Lighting, which is lightings and planting, some trees, he said.
Colby, were those exact locations or those estimated locations?
Estimated locations, I mean, some of it has, it's pretty close. I mean, when I met with June, I was only really working on the roof and then June asked to kind of give an idea of what I was doing with the property. So that's why you got an idea of what I'm doing with the property. I mean, I, I don't know exactly what I'm doing. I mean, some of it depends on cash flow. Some of it depends on what I need for storage on property to be able to provide stuff for sale with, you know, for customers, storage of dry goods, stuff like that. I know I'm gonna have an issue. The greenhouse and that storage bins out on the other side is something that I really do need to be moving forward with. I mean, I don't know how much I have to be involved with which board or who for a greenhouse. I mean, I A greenhouse to me seems portable because I, you know, you can move them even though it's anchored to the ground, but I've moved them several times. So. I don't know at what level or who or which direction I go once I get beyond the roof aspect at this point. So I, I've been having a, a bit of a challenging time with these next few, these last few steps. And, I mean. I think my condition with what I'm doing out there maybe isn't. As cookie cutter to like a market basket or an Irving's or, uh, McDonald's, because I have different type structures. Greenhouse. There's not many greenhouses on Tenny Mountain Highway. So. I don't know. I, so I was just, uh, June had asked me to kind of just give an idea of my direction and that's why it's a little crude. But I had, uh, for the lamps, the light posts, I, I view that as a little bit of a security thing. I've already bought the lamp post. They're, uh, from nineteen twelve from the Seaport. So they're. You know, old antique light fixtures. I have the old porcelain light shades with, uh, the. Angle iron that was all hand forged as down lighting fixtures. Uh, other than that, I haven't really looked into what all the requirements are, I guess, to meet there. I just know that a lot of commercial light, uh, lots have lighting and. Figured I'd be moving in the right direction with what I have. Uh, I mean, the, the development already has roughed in conduit. On the side of that road that I want to tie it in at some point. But putting in the light fixtures is probably not my top priority in the next year either. Uh, I mean, I own the parts and the pieces, but so that's why it was just kind of an X on the map at this point, um. You know, so that was just that.
Thank you. Um, I think we've got a couple of options here. One is to just approve the. Um, roof extension. Uh, and then at let the applicant know that any subsequent development, whether it's a fence, anything that zoning or zoning ordinance. Or site plan regs require him to come to the board for gets.
Is that required for, is that required for a fence if it's under four feet? I mean, now I'm starting to quickly realize that anytime I want to do something is now going to cost me. Several hundreds of dollars. I'm already, you know, close to a thousand dollars into this for.
Yeah.
Roof. Structure.
Colby, I'm trying to give the board some options here. So, you know, just bear with us for a second. I know that. We're not trying to make things more difficult for you. Um, we're trying to follow the letter, you know, what the regulations that we've got set in the town. So. And I know there's been some challenges. So I feel like the board has a couple of options. One is to approve just the, um. And June, please jump in if, if this seems, if I'm, you know, missing something here or anybody jumping up and missing something, but roof extension, anything else needs to come back for the board. Are we comfortable with? A fence as long as it's allowed within the zoning and lights in the proximity of the, you know, where those Xs are. You know, what's, what's the threshold for when we'd want this applicant to come back? So that's my question. Mike?
So, um, I love Rebecca that you pointed out that there are more than just one option and I, I applaud you for that. And I would, um. I would love to, to possibly so that he's not, so Kobe's not coming back and. Uh, notifying the butters, which there's no one at this meeting. It's, it's, you know, he's far enough out there down there on Tenny Mountain Highway that there's. Um, not a lot of closer butters that are going to have issues with a portable, um. Greenhouse that's not going to be set on any type of foundation. It sounds like it's, it could be moved from one year to the next. And he's talking about a fence. No taller than so many feet. I would think that we could make a conditional approval and I'm not voting on this issue, but that, um. We could make the conditional approval that before he cites it, that, uh, June would go out to the site, make sure that it, um. It's within town regs in that it's acceptable location. That's, I think could be done with a conditional approval.
Yeah. So I think we just need to think about what we're asking for from a lot of applicants as is the as-built plans when they're done with something. So I want to make sure that. You know, which is a valuable thing to have for the next owner of the property as well. So I want to make sure that we're. Like I said, I'm not trying to make this difficult for any one applicant, but let's just make sure we're thinking long range here, um. And that. I'm not sure. I think, I think we just need to make sure we're thinking about this thoroughly, um. So.
And again, it, the site is small and he's, he's got some constraints, issues and, um. The more that the planning board works with him, I think that is. Is, is valuable for the town and, um, especially the applicant, but. Um, the more the planning board can work with the applicant, I think the better it is for, for the town.
I, I, I mean, I think we are working with him and I think we're doing our best to make sure we can get this to happen, but still make sure that we're thinking about. Big picture stuff as well. And I, I do want to emphasize the importance of a butters, whether anybody's here tonight or at the next time that there's a change for any property. That this is, that, that's why we, why we do this process. So.
And I would agree with that, Rebecca. I agree.
You know, I, I, I feel pretty strongly, you know, that when we, um. Review a site plan, we, we ask for, you know, all the relevant details about signage and lighting to be on the, on the plan. And we want lighting details normally. So, you know. It, it sounds like, you know, he's on the right track with, uh, you know, e- even though, you know, the, the antique fixtures sound like they would be downcast and, and likely would comply with our lighting regulations, but. Um, you know, we, we do generally require that kind of detail on a site plan. Before they get installed, but, um, you know, that's not before us at this time. Um, you know, and I, I'd like to do as much as we can to kind of. Cover as much as we can on the site plan while he's here, but at the same time, I, I also feel like we should. Address the application that was submitted, which was for the roof extension. And I don't think anybody's questioning whether or not we can approve that. I suspect that we'll all vote. To do that pretty easily. My question is, you know, is, is it worth? You know, I, I don't want to put him on the spot and ask him for, um. I mean, I, I suppose we could, um, ask him to do an as-built for the lights, but you know, that kind of relinquishes our ability to review and approve what he's putting up too. So. So that's just my thought on the topic.
Yeah. And I don't necessarily know if I have an answer for the greenhouse, whether that's a, maybe June has an answer for that, but, um, a greenhouse, whether that's a accessory structure or.
What? I mean, I, I'd say treat, treat it like a storage unit. I mean, we had that discussion the other day. People are dropping storage containers everywhere. They're temporary, right? And you, you can pick up a greenhouse and move it just as easily as a storage container.
Yeah, we'll have to look at, I, I, you know, to be honest, right now, I'm not going to thumb through the zoning orders, looking for the answer to that. To me that.
I just thought you know it off the top of your head, June.
Not at none, not at any thirty at night. Um, so the, you know, our site plan review regulations have four triggers to, you know, require it's change of use, basically expanding a use, um. Or expanding a structure, uh, and then, you know, physical expansions of, of only a hundred square feet. So which is very small. At some point we're going to, I'm going to recommend you make, make. Consider making that maybe a little bigger, but then the fourth one is modifications to previously approved site plans. And that's where this one sort of, you know, the original plan was very detailed, drawn out by when Dennis, um, had the structure built. And now it's sort of. Because of the nature of the different type of business and I, and I think what is there is the kind of business that changes, you know, new materials come in and it's very dynamic, um. Whereas Aroma Joe's might be a little bit more static and known, you know, um, that kind of thing. So. Um, I guess in that, you know, in the future, it'd be nice to make some revisions to our regulations to kind of work with. Supporting small businesses to be able to do things in piecemeal. The only thing I would say, um, to Colby is, you know, the, this application was for one site. And I believe it's one or two lots on the other side of Hamilton Way that he owned. So we really aren't discussing those. And that's where the greenhouse is proposed. So let's kind of forget about that. Just stick within the site. Um, and if you guys are comfortable with what he's suggesting as general locations for some lighting and plantings, then. Accept that revised plan and, um, you know, I'd be happy to make sure that. Before its installation, that it's reasonable within, you know, general standards that we, we have. So.
Okay. So it sounds like. Go ahead, Colby.
Also, two years ago, I was in front of the board with. Site change use and then overview of. The project anyhow. So, I mean, I've already been, this is now the second time. Talking about this project and at that time, there were some other approvals of stuff, I guess, that might've happened or different from where we are today. But, uh, I don't know. I was just bringing that up.
Okay.
Sorry to jump in one more time. One thing I didn't think of from what Colby has said is like, if you're going to give some kind of conditional approval, while it's my understanding, he wants to go quickly on this addition. The other components, you might want to give an extension beyond the, the one, I think it's one year. You know, because he said it may be a couple of years before the lighting and the landscaping goes in, if you decide to include that in.
Okay.
So he doesn't have to keep coming back.
If you put in the lighting and landscaping, I don't believe either of those would trigger site plan review at that point, would they? They're not, I mean, it's not an expansion. It's just a minor change. It wouldn't, it wouldn't really be a full trigger, would it?
Was the development originally approved with, you know, lights in it and it just not installed because all the conduits there?
Yeah. Again, I'd have to go back and look, but. I mean, I think he's done a good job to kind of indicate that he's moving ahead on these things at some point in the future. So, um, you know, if within the next two to three years or whatever timeline he wants to tell you. Is reasonable for his operations, then that would be adequate to. To be a little.
Okay. So if we have an approval for the. Addition to the building and. General locations for plantings and lights. Are good from the board. Um. With the condition that they've got to be installed by December 31st, 2022, um. Does that make sense? Or?
I, I don't know. I mean, the, the light aspect, I just don't know really yet. The financial aspect. I mean, if it's going to be a $20,000 venture, I just don't know if I'm really going to want to spend. $20,000 to install that within the year. Right? Was that like a year and a half? Were you giving a year and a couple of months? I just, I'm just, I mean, it, it's all just, I mean. Every day you show up there and you figure out what you're doing. Like it, it evolves. It takes me on a path that, uh, is all, you know, it's not the same every day. And I just don't know. At what point I can bite off a piece of the puzzle kind of thing. Uh, it's a little bit different. I'm doing it all on my own. So it's, it's a little bit slower going versus, uh, you know, once again, a market basket coming in.
Okay. So. We approved the addition. And how do we, do we account for these other things? These are questions for the board, um. With some sort of timestamp on that or with the approval of. Town staff to make sure that lighting and landscaping fit within the scope of the, um. The, um, zoning ordinance and site plan regulations, um.
I can ask a question?
Yeah.
If we give. The approval for the lighting and other landscaping features. And he doesn't get them done by that time, can he come in and request an extension?
Yeah, I think with, in writing within 30 days of the end date. I think it's something like that.
Yeah. Seem reasonable.
Mike?
He's not really having customers there in, during the evening hours. So maybe we can just leave the lighting off for now or give it five years? Just a suggestion.
Yes.
I'm reluctant.
Comfortable with a five year.
I, I mean, the more I think about it, it's probably something realistically, I just got to bite. Off and get done sooner or later. It is more of a security thing. I mean, equipment is going to be sitting out there. I just, you know. You commit to something today. I just don't know how that's going to ripple tomorrow. Um. You know, five years, probably not. I mean, isn't this year, probably not, but next year, maybe hopefully, I don't know. I mean. There's thousands of dollars of stuff sitting out there. Never mind the equipment and stuff like that. I've already had to deal with vandalism on other properties that I own in town. So. I'm feeling like it's only a matter of time before it happens there. So unfortunately. That the lights, the security, the gate, that kind of stuff has got to kind of happen. I guess sooner. Once I'm stepping back from this, uh, and thinking about it. Uh, I mean, really my main focus was the roof. Um, if some other things could go through on this, then that would be great. Um. Uh, you know, still, still trying to understand how all the boards work together and what board does what and who does what. I mean, I. So sometimes present, you know, knowing how to present the right information at times. And, uh, when I met with June, she kind of just said to. Use, you know, that's why it was a kind of a crude drawing to give an idea of my direction, uh. Light posts, like I said, I do already have and was hoping to work with them. Uh, site trees, I was thinking of like an elm tree, something that's upright, vertical structure. So I can have line of sight into the yard, but not. Uh, but also have a high up canopy over that would give, uh, you know, um. Some landscape curb appeal. Again, I mean, obviously I'm, it's a landscape supply yard and there's going to be a lot of. Curb appeal to it. Once I can finally get stuff installed and laid out.
So typically what we get and, you know, we see applications from, from, you know, a scale. Much smaller than yours up to market basket. You know, what we saw with the Roma Joe's, I think was a good example of something that's a bigger business, but smaller scale development. Um, and you, since you had to sit through that, um, you know, you could see the, the detail that we're getting in some of those plans and we're certainly asking for. You know, these fully engineered drawings, but there's a certain amount of information that we do need, um. And, uh, so, um. Yeah. So, uh.
I think a lot of that was maybe addressed with what Dennis, um. Prescott had built and put, I mean, his plans were for the whole development with drainage and conduit sewer, like. All the meat and potatoes are there. I'm just kind of doing the, the final paint job on the building, if you will, per se. I mean, I'm not. Doing massive construction per se, or putting up another big building that's insulated, uh, you know, I mean, a lot of, um, uh. I don't know. Well, just some different structures. I mean, I, I guess another way I could do it is shipping containers, but that's not really the look I'm trying to put out there at that property. And it's not. The curb appeal. I mean. So I guess that's the other way I could go with it, right? I mean, you can bring in a tractor trailer and park it out there. So, I mean. That, that's not what I'm trying to do. And so, uh, I don't know. Anyways.
All right. So as a board, what do we want to do? What do folks think? And someone could just make a motion with some conditions and we can see what happens or, um.
All right. I, I found the conditions and I will, I will. Make, make the first stab at it and say that I would, I would approve, I, I would make the motion that we approve. Uh, the site plan as submitted, um, with the condition that, um. Within. Two years and up to date site plan showing all the details and locations of, um, the building, the pavement areas, um. The plantings and the lighting be submitted. So give him two years from date of approval to submit kind of an as-built site plan. With anything that's there on site.
I second.
Any further discussion from the board? That was a good motion, by the way, Phil.
Okay. Trying to give him flexibility, make it easy.
I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. It'll be helpful. I mean, I'm really trying to do the right thing out there. It's a little bit different than the regular stuff.
So, so keep in mind that, you know, there's going to be some leeway, but you're going to, you're still going to need to make sure that, you know, the lighting is compliant with the zoning ordinance and. Any fences are compliant, you know, if you need building permits for fences, you'd still have to obtain those, but you know, anything that you end up doing. Uh, just put it on an as-built within two years. That's my, my recommendation.
So Rebecca, I love, I, I like that idea and that gives him what a year, Phil, from the. Two years to do the design and then how long to build it out. So another year?
Two, two years to, for, to submit an as-built with what's there. So it's up to him to, to schedule it.
And it would be really nice. We haven't had a, um. A greenhouse on Tenny Mountain Highway since Kelly's flowers, and that must've been at least 25 years ago.
That's a different site.
I remember that.
That's a different site, Mike, that would, unless he's putting the greenhouse on this particular parcel, that wouldn't be on this site either.
No, it'd be nice to see greenhouse on Tenny Mountain Highway again.
I'm okay with that. Yeah.
Um, okay. So. We have a motion on the table. Any further discussions in the board? Right. I'll read the roll. John.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
Carl.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
Mike Bichard.
Hi.
Susan. Susan?
Hi.
And I for me. Thank you, Colby.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Get in touch, come to a meeting, get in touch with June. If you have other questions, we're, we're happy to help and we like to see you here, but you know, we'd rather not see you here and see you doing your business.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
See you later.
Have a good evening. Bye.
All right. Trying to find my agenda here. Here it is. All right, we have one more thing in our public hearing section. This is a continuation of a site plan review application from Fatherland Family Trust for construction of recreational vehicle park. Um, nineteen sites on five acres, parcel number two one three dash zero two eight. We accepted this application on December seventeenth. We've continued it a couple of times. I think we, this is the final continuation today is the day of the deadline. We have received, uh, we all got the communication that June has um has uh, sent to the applicant and his response requesting another extension. Um, to date, I think we asked for a number of materials and this is just for the site plan review. We're not talking about the, the subdivision. But uh, we asked for a number of materials from the applicant um, for us to move forward. I think we set a deadline in February for that. Is that right? Um, and we haven't received those materials. So um, I think the question before the board is do we continue this to another dates um, to our next meeting in May or do we determine that we have that we need to um, not approve this plan and uh request that the applicant starts, starts again?
I, I think if he had done nothing, it would make sense to, to uh, deny the application, but he, he did indicate that he has retained an engineer to provide some of the information that we've, so he's, he's making progress on our, our requests. Um, I believe he said he's engaged Horizon Engineering, Horizon Engineering in the letter that he submitted. Uh, so I, I, I do think he's making an effort.
Um, I do want to just point out a couple of things is, you know, just want to make sure we're being conscious of the time of our our butters as well, since we have been continuing this for multiple meetings. We're also being mindful of um the efforts of the town staff, which equates to, you know, taxpayer dollars. And I know that there's been a lot of effort putting, put forth to deal with this um, to continue to move this application forward. I mean, then the board time as well, we spent a lot of time on this as well. So I just want to make sure that, you know, if we're kicking the can down the road, are we making more work for us, more work for June and Jules? Um, and are we just constantly making it confusing and more difficult for the butters? So.
I would, if you don't mind. Try to keep this, try to keep this quick. I appreciate your saying that Rebecca. Um, if we, if you did want to go with that request to extend till May, um, the deadline for uh, our May twentieth meeting that we have as a application submittal deadline for new applications um, is May, is April twenty ninth. I just wanted to point that out and I would ask the board that you, that that is a hard, fast deadline to get any new information because we need time to review it. Um, I'm guessing we would want, uh, you know, to, and for me to determine if the town's engineer needs to review it and that kind of thing too. So I do not want to see, you know, uh, new information coming May nineteenth or the afternoon of May twentieth or something like that. I will give you one other update that happened late um, mid-afternoon. We did have an individual show up at town hall. I actually did not talk from Jules did. Um, they had some money for a butter fees uh, related to this application or the subdivision. I don't know. There was no plans or anything, so I had said we should not accept those funds because we didn't, we didn't know what it was for. Um, just to take money in town hall is not good practice when we don't have it really tied to a um, revised subdivision. You know, we had the subdivision plan and we asked the um.
Is trying to put a record, you know, compete against us.
Excuse, so the, um, anyway, the, the, I just wanted to point that out, but you know, so there, I'm not sure what the progress is being made and if we're gonna get any new plans for May, we would want to see all the materials for this site plan by April twenty ninth.
Okay.
We also some of.
Okay, Mary Ann, go ahead.
I'm just warning, is there somehow we can say, you know, April twenty ninth is it, right? If there's, you either go, we either move forward or not. Um, either provide the information or we've kicked this can down the fuck the road as far as we can. Kind of the last ditch effort one more time.
Yeah, I think we could probably let the applicant know that, but we could just, you know, maybe reinforce ourselves in that way too, that, you know, we can continue it to our next, our next meeting, but um, yeah. Your next public hearing.
I was just, um, I, I was thinking reading the letters, I'm not given a whole lot of confidence in the attention to this and I'm just wondering if anyone uh um, from Fatherland Trust or representing them would like to speak. Um, I'm curious to hear if there's any reasonable um expectation of needing even in a kick down the road deadline.
Mr. Ferguson? Do you have an answer to that?
I can't, I can't address for uh, Horizon, but uh, for Horizon Engineering, but I know Joe has uh, retained them to do the work, so I can see that as a uh, uh, personally, I'd like to see that uh, have a deadline of that and uh, you can decide from, from what you get there to accept or deny from, from that point on. Uh, the subdivision part is a different animal, but uh, similar as well. So I guess, uh, I can't speak for Horizon, but I can say for uh, for Joe that I would rather, uh, if you're gonna pick a hard deadline, that the twenty ninth would be more applicable than uh, than saying that we're gonna have to start again. And I think just that that is gonna start a, a lot more work for everybody. Where we've, we're pretty close on that. I know from the subdivision point of view, they had a bad month. And uh, so that's why I hadn't gotten some of the stuff to it towards you for the subdivision. But uh, I was gonna, gonna address that.
We'll, we'll, we'll address that separately since that is a, you know, it is obviously related, but not part of this um, aspect of the public hearing. Um, okay, so a motion to continue this to I have the twenty twenty schedule here. Uh, the second Thursday in May. And the applicant.
Is that the second Thursday or the third Thursday?
Third Thursday.
Okay, yep.
Yeah. Um, the third Thursday in May.
Twentieth?
And
Yep.
All material will adhere to our um, the submission deadline. So April twenty ninth, all material to be considered for our May public hearing needs to be received at the town hall by April twenty ninth. So.
Can I ask, i- is there a way of emphasizing that this is like really a hard deadline this time?
June?
Um, I tried to put that in the letters, but I can be, I can write a stronger letter. Sure.
I get it.
Yeah, and I think that uh, you, given how long this has gone on and given that we're asking for a revised set of plans that pulls all these things together clearly, um, that we notify the butters for a new hearing on May twentieth. I think it's time, enough time's gone by. That would be good. So we'd also need by April twenty ninth um, fees for that. Those are butter notices.
Question on that?
Go ahead.
Uh, since we're gonna notify it for the subdivision as well, can we do the uh, have the subdivision and the, and the uh, you're, you're answering no already?
If you, sorry, please continue. I, I'm processing as you're speaking.
We're gonna notify the same butters twice?
Two separate applications that have to be notified twice, noticed twice. Okay. All right, so and this is why in a lot of ways it would be easier just to deny this application tonight and ask the applicant to start over. Um, but we're trying to not make things difficult. Maybe we're making things more difficult. I'm not sure, but um.
Appreciate it. I, I wasn't thinking of it as to the separate applications, but you're right. It keeps getting mixed, but yep. That's not a problem.
Okay, so what do folks think? We want to continue this for one more, one more month? Or is this?
That going to one more month? But that's it.
Is, is that, is that, is that a motion, Mary Ann?
This time, that's it.
That's right. We really mean it.
Yeah.
Mary Ann, was that a motion?
That was an official motion, yes.
All right.
All right, so a motion to continue this to the third Thursday in May. An applicant is advised that if material isn't received with a, and a butter fees for the site plan review to notify all the butters by April twenty ninth, um, then this board is likely, I don't know if I can say we will deny it, but we're, you know, planning on denying it.
Won't look favorably.
Yeah.
Yeah. I get it. That motion.
Can I just make a motion? I don't, I don't ever do that.
I think it was, yeah. You, you're putting conditions on Mary Ann's motion.
Okay.
I can do.
Or at least a narrative.
Yeah.
Mike?
So I'm not voting on this, but I just had a clarification for you, Rebecca. Um, is there a precedent to continuing the applicant's, the process, but to, but to also ask to re-notify the butters? Is there any precedent to that?
I'm confused on that as well.
It sounds like there's enough confusion in the application and, and, and the answer is probably no. There is no precedent for that because this is, it seems like an unprecedented case as far as I'm concerned. Um, but anyway, as far as this, my experience in the board, but it seems like there's been enough confusion and how the information has been presented that applicants when they were noticed, weren't looking at an existing site plan that's consistent with what we might see in the next, at the next meeting. Does that explain it, June?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I think, I think you, you have broad discretion in my opinion to, um, you know, err on the side of caution and to notify the butters and the applicant is required to pay for that. So it's better to to make sure that, you know, people know what they're gonna be seeing and the, you know, one of the big issues with this, we've gotten a lot of revisions at various times. They've kind of come in. It's been very confusing. So if we get a new set of plans by April twenty ninth, along with a set of, you know, a check to, it's five dollars per butter. Um, then we can send out a notice saying we have revised plans. You're welcome to come in and look at them and the hearing will continue on May twentieth. So.
So Rebecca, potentially, we might be notifying the butters for this meeting coming up and then if we end that process and he has to start again the next month, potentially we could be notifying the butters all over again thirty days later. I wonder whether it might make sense to see this through for one more month, see where it goes. Then there's the potential we might be re-notifying the butters only once rather than twice.
What do other folks think? My inclination is that we don't have a really good sense of what we're even gonna see. It's just, it's been a long drawn and when we first noticed this, we accepted this application on December seventeen. I don't think, did we hold a public hearing that night? I, I don't remember. It's a while ago. We, we accepted this application and judging by what, how we normally do business, we probably held a public hearing that night. So we've been continuing this for, this is our fourth or fifth month. Um, so in what we've seen, there's been so many iterations of what we've seen that, you know, if an applicant had a concern in December, the plan has changed since then. Um, as far as what we've seen, so I think we are erring on the side of caution, but our job in the public hearing process is to facilitate a forum where applicants and are uh, butters can, you know, view the plans and state their case. So I feel like we're not serving that aspect of it if the plans have changed enough or it's been a long enough time. I don't know.
I, I just, I have the original application. I mean, it was, it was from the November. I started in January, but um, for some reason, instead of the minimum four hundred dollar application fee, they were charged a hundred dollars and the butter fees were only thirty-five dollars, which seems like there were butters in that. So we they've paid so far a hundred and thirty-five dollars and given the amount of time we've put into this is something to think about. Um, but again, the, the so the note, but the notification fee says it was only thirty-five dollars. I don't, I'd have to look at how many butters I really want. It's five dollars in the butter.
Susan?
I haven't been involved in this from the very beginning, but it sounds like a lot of time has been spent. You are giving him this one last ditch effort. And I think if there has been changes, the butters should know about it or have the chance to look at it. And if by chance they don't and he doesn't come up with it, then it's the last ditch effort and he should probably start over.
What do other folks think about, about uh, doing an additional butter notice?
I think it should be done. They're uh, expecting the uh, planning board to actually keep them informed. And if we aren't sending out, even if it seems like it's an additional notice, they're at least being informed that there's been significant changes that they may, may want to look at.
My, my thought is that if we're going to notice the butters again, um, which I, I don't disagree with. I think we should deny the application at this point. With the you know, with reason that it, it, there was information not presented that we need to decide and it wasn't presented in a timely manner. And once we uh, deny the application, that gives the applicant time to regroup, make a new complete application, then the, then the butters will get to see the complete new application.
Phil, is that a motion?
No, because we have a motion on the table.
Oh, we do.
So we would have to vote on Mary Ann's motion first before anybody makes another motion.
Okay. So we can do a vote on this motion. If we vote nay, we can then think about Phil's motion or potential motion. Uh, because I, I do like that idea, so um, and I, I think that's a good point. I'm, I'm trying to understand how much more effort it will be on the part of the applicant because we're asking for a full set of plans that we have not seen to date. Um, they'd notify the butters. There is the application fee, which I think is the, the biggest hardship on the part of the applicant. And
Relative to engaging the services of an engineer, I don't think the application fee is going to be very significant.
All right. So the motion on the table right now is to continue this to our May me, uh, public hearing, the third Thursday in May.
In do I have a, can I have a moment to say something?
Um.
Am I past that?
I think we're past that at this point.
Just that Phil brought up something new. But okay.
Oh yeah, go, go ahead.
I'm just thinking that uh, if if we can't do it by the twenty, can't get everything by the twenty ninth, then we'll have to withdraw the application. So if we don't, if you give us a hard deadline that we don't have it, then if I'm, if I'm understanding you correct, that if we don't have it by the twenty ninth, then we're gonna have to uh, we either give you that information. If we can't, then we're gonna have to withdraw the application and uh, because you're only allowing so many continuances and that's all. I don't know how many continuances.
This is the site plan we're talking about, right?
Right.
Yeah, so I, I think, I think we could just continue this until the end of time. Um.
Yeah, I don't know the precedent of how much you continue stuff, but uh, Yeah, I don't know the precedent of how much you continue stuff, but yeah, with denying him now.
I.
You're that close.
We're, we're, we're well beyond the statutory date that we're required to issue a ruling and, and the applicant has requested extensions at this point. And we're obligated to continue to grant extensions.
And that's, I was just.
June. So I, I'm sorry to interrupt here, but I.
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you, Steve, for bringing that up. I totally missed this one. So the applicant, uh, on the application is signed by Joseph Carter, who's not here tonight. And, um, I mean, I guess he wrote to request the extension, you know, so. Um, you know, the question is, do you agree to it and moving ahead on that? Because you are, you know, you, you would, you're, you're at the point where you're going to make a decision tonight or.
I'm really representing the subdivision, I mean.
Yeah, Mr. Ferguson, we're here talking about the site plan, not the.
Right, and because I'm attached to the, the project that way. Can easily, can easily get Joe on so that he can, he can see what you're doing, but.
I, I don't, I don't think that's necessary at this point. I think. I think.
He's requested, I guess he's requested, from what you're saying, June, is he requested to get a continuance, so that's, that's what you're asked, that's what you're dealing with, yep.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to continue. Or to deny, or no, that's not the motion on the table. The motion is to continue. We have the option to make a motion to deny if we get through this, this motion here. So the motion on the table is to approve with a hard, or to continue with a hard deadline. Another, what I thought, I thought we already did a hard deadline, but another hard deadline to, uh, April 29th of submission of materials. I'm going to read the roll. John?
Nay.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
Phil?
Nay.
Mike Bouchard?
Nay.
Susan?
Hi.
And I'm a nay. One, two, three.
Four to three.
So the motion did not pass. Phil, you're up.
I'll make a motion that we deny the application. On, on the grounds that there, there have been numerous. Pieces of information supporting documentation that we have asked to be submitted. That has not been presented in a timely manner. Um, and that my main concern with that is that the interest of the butters may be lost. And that any plans that they have seen are probably likely to going to be very different, so. But I guess I'll leave it at that.
There's second.
I second that.
And I just want to note that, notice that Phil, I'm sure maybe you all know this, but I'm just going to say it, that we have to give reason if we deny an application. So Phil, thank you for doing that in your motion. Um, any further discussion?
Um, my only discussion is that I would encourage the applicant to reapply with a full plan. I think, you know, in concept, what he wants to do could be a good. Uh, good development, but I do think that it was lacking in critical information. Specifically, you know, indicating the floodway. You know, the details on the building. You know, there were numerous things that we had asked for that had not been provided. Uh, so I would encourage him to apply again in the future.
I, I think that's a good, I think that's good. Thank you for saying that. Any other comments? All right, reading the roll. Don?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Hi.
Carl?
Hi.
Phil?
Hi.
Mike Bouchard?
Hi.
Susan?
Hi.
And an I for me. Okay, so we have denied this application. Woo. All right, um. Mr. Ferguson, while you're here, we, we've been here for a long time, so I don't want to spend too much time. I think it's pretty clear what needs to happen with the subdivision. Stuff on this parcel, but is there anything else that you wanted to say about the subdivision? That can take a very, very short amount of time, that's going to add anything new to the conversation?
Uh, that if I can get it in by the, uh, I can get everything in by the 29th easily.
Great.
In a nice, concise, beautiful looking plan.
We look forward to it. All right, thank you. All right. Moving on. We have some informal and pre-application reviews. We've got two of you here. Thank you both for sticking out through a long meeting. I'm just going to go with who's first on the list. Eric Miller, lucky you, you get to go first, Dragonfly Property Management Subdivision Site Plan Review for 12 Hitchner Road, PID. 104. Dash 018 dash 000 in the ICD on 12 and a half acres. Go ahead, Eric.
Good evening. I'm Eric Miller. I purchased RJ Crowley in February 2019. Tonight, what I'm looking to do is two parts, actually. We're looking to do a subdivision. There's 12 and a half acres. We're looking to take seven, roughly seven and a quarter acres and put a self-storage units on the back. And then take the existing building and leave it in a plot that would be about five and a quarter acres in the front. Um, if you don't mind, I'll do a screen share to kind of give you guys an idea of what we're trying to do here. All right, is that working?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, generally what we're looking at is the, the building that you, you see over here to the, to the right is the existing one. This is the current driveway that runs down. So the plan basically calls for, um, taking a fence and surrounding the, the existing parking lot that's over here. Which will remain part of the front lot. So if I were to trace where we're going. We have increased road crunch based on June's recommendation as far as we can. Uh, on Highland, and it runs up here, runs the perimeter of the parking lot. Cuts over to the back of the, the building and goes straight across, making the back part of this, this property a separate lot. But we're looking to actually put a fence around that is shared between the front lot and back lot. That will have a mechanical opening gate that will be maintained by both parties. And then give a right-of-way for the back lot that goes through the parking lot and leads into where the self-storage units are going to end up. So, um, uh, generally speaking, um, you know, what we're looking at is four different self-storage buildings. Kevin French, Frenchland Services is here and can speak to the, the, the plan that he's drew, uh, drawn so far. Right now, you know, obviously we're here for a conceptual review. He will bring us into an actual site plan once we kind of make sure that, that what we're thinking is a workable. Solution is one, in fact, uh, something that's thought of favorably by the board. Couple of things that are worth noting. The current survey, if you follow my, my cursor right here. It has the right-of-way for the town lot that's in the back. It goes straight through, um, uh, the, the woods that is currently there. So they made the decision probably for grading to move and create a driveway that is outside of the right-of-way. So part of what we're going to be asking for in this is that we will amend the right-of-way to reflect as built. And then it, it works for obviously both the towns, you don't have the cost of relocating the driveway. And it works for us in the sense that we need that extra space for the, the ability for, for larger trucks to make the turn to go down these first, you know, between the two buildings. Uh, on this side. So, um, one of the things that you should know is that, um, going back to the 1980s. Hitcher Manufacturer, which had this building, there was a drainage pipe that ran right about here to straight back to a cement loo here. And they dropped trichloride, I guess it is, or I'm probably saying it wrong. Uh, and that started the, the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services came in. They never had to do a mitigation plan, but they, there is 11 wells that are, and let me just get you to this. There are 11 monitoring wells to, to track where this trichloride end up being underground. So 30 years of them monitoring this, this site, what we're down to, just looking at the data set. Is that right over here, this well set, these two wells next to each other is the center of the plume. And that, um, the rest of this is all moved, um, you know, out and about. What you'll notice is that over here is the issue that's, that's caught up in the environmental, um, issue. If you'll, if you flip back to here, you'll notice that we are working in a footprint that has, does not go near where there ever was any pollution. Our long-term plan is that we will actually look to put some self-storage units over here. Um, I've had conversations with the, um, the, uh, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. They're saying from the time I submit that plan, I'm looking at about a year. So, um, if, if we were to get through the approval process for these other units. I will draw up a plan for them, submit it, uh, and let that age. And I will not come back to the planning board until such time as I've come to an understanding with, uh, the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. That's really kind of the only, you know, sort of hiccup in the, in the process of, of doing this, this development. That and relocating the right-of-way to where it actually is built, as opposed to where it shows up on the plan. Generally speaking, um, and, um, I, I, I'm actually asking for some advice here. We are not looking to put water or sewer in this area. In fact, we're working to have at least for the employees that will lease out the, the, um, uh, self-storage units that will be in the warehouse. So any employee that's associated with, uh, the self-storage unit. Be in the, um, parking lot will be, will be associated with the moving and storage business. And they'll be physically located in the building that already has, uh, public water and public sewer. That the, the old sewage that was there historically, it's been abandoned. So I don't know if I need to ask for waiver, um, come May on the water and sewer, but the thing is, we're just not going to have it on that site. The other thing is parking, since the only, um, parking you have will be transitory, i.e. people coming in. Dropping off their goods for each of these self-storage units and leaving. We do not intend to have any onsite parking for, let's say, an RV or boats or any of that nature. It, it is, they come in, they use their self-storage unit and they leave. So I, I, I don't know if I need to formally ask for a waiver on the parking aspect of this, or whether or not it's just, in fact, I'm not using it means that I don't need to address it. As for the lighting of the, uh, around the self-storage units, they will be on motion detectors. So, um, I, I know you want downcast lighting, we will have downcast lighting. But it, it would be something that has a drive-in, that they want to have motion detectors that would go off and light up the areas which they are currently active in. As for signage, if you were to look up by Highland Street over here. There is an existing sign that is setback from the road that is associated with the moving and storage business. I'm looking to put basic rendition onto that sign and do two more signs. One of them would, would reference the. Self, the, the, excuse me, self-storage, um, business. And then we're actually going to allow for Pensive Truck Rentals to happen out of, um, this location as well. So the bottom side would be for Pensive, the top would be for the self-storage. The, we're thinking that we can just match the signage that's there. Each side of that is roughly 64 square feet, which is, as far as I can tell from your, um, your published documentation is within the, the correct size. As for, uh, the traffic, um, we're talking about a self-storage unit, so it's not daily traffic at all. It's in fact, it's, it's sort of an intermittent, intermittent, excuse me, struggling on the word, uh, traffic. So I don't, uh, I, I, I think it's low enough that I don't really need to, to address the traffic in the submission in, um, uh, May. But I'm, that's kind of what I'm looking for in terms of advice as to, you know, have I. Properly, uh, address it if I need that out. And, um. So, um, I mean, generally, and I'm trying to keep this short. I know you guys have had a, a, a very long night. But that would kind of give you the, the initial overview of it. Um, I do have Kevin French here who can address, um, more specific questions you might have. Once we have sort of come to the, the, um, uh, understanding that generally. The structure of what we propose is something that you'd like to see in form of a formal submission and have to go through a public hearing. Kevin will go on to do the stormwater, you know, drains and runoff. Actually, I should probably share just.
Okay, I think, I think I'm going to just, I'm going to stop you here. I think, um.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I think that we can answer your, the questions you have. I'll first just address the idea of, you know, whether or not this is what we want to see here. That's, that's not really up to us. It's our zoning that really determines that. So, um, we can answer your questions about the, do you need a waiver for the, uh, not having water in that other property? The answer is yes. Water and sewer. The, the question about parking spaces, I think our zoning ordinance, while it leaves a lot to be desired, there is another use. So where you can have adequate spaces to accommodate customers, patrons, employees. Must be provided and determined by the planning board under its site plan review procedures. So I think if, if you have a business that doesn't meet the type of use where we have defined parking. Then we can work with you on determining how much, what the parking space is. Their requirements are. There was two more questions that I can't.
Traffic, it, it has very low frequency of traffic, but there is reference in your write-up on. That I have to address it one way or another. I think, I think everybody here understands what a self-storage unit is in terms of volume and traffic. But I, I want to make sure that my submission is complete when I send it next month.
I am of the opinion, please, other people jump in, that, of course, I know what a storage unit is. So, uh, yeah, so I understand the, the limited, I would think there'd be limited traffic. Impact, but what do other folks think? I mean, it seems ridiculous to request a traffic study for this, something like this.
I would not feel the need to request a traffic study, considering the, the volume of, of, you know, moving trucks that had been going in and out of Crowley. And the fact that, you know, there was a store there that was retail, um, you know, the. Plus, there's, there's an existing blinking traffic light there that has some level of traffic control for Highland Street. So I, I'm very confident, I'm very comfortable with not requesting a traffic study there.
I do think if truck rentals are happening out of there, that does represent a change of use for the other building, so, right? Going for that.
I'm not sure how to answer that, um, the.
That's more for the, that's more for the board. If there's going to be a truck rental, I mean, that, is that a different type of business than what's existing there? Enough to require a site plan review for that side? I, I don't know. So, but if we're doing a subdivision. And site plan for the. The storage unit lot, then. You know, we can focus on that for now, so.
Okay, and then the issue associated with, um, the driveway that's used by the town. It, it is clearly outside of the right-of-way as it's currently listed. Um, I don't have a problem having my attorney update the deeds at the time that, you know, should, should this be approved? To update the deeds to reflect what's actually there. But from our standpoint, it, it's, um, uh, we would prefer that, that we kind of accept what's currently there. Because our plan in terms of entrance into that area is, uh. Where the, the, the current right-of-way is listed, so like, you know.
That's going to be more of a. That's going to be more of a select board issue than a planning board issue. You know, we are the town's planning board, but we're not going to be the ones that would approve a change to a right-of-way for a piece of town property. That would be the select board that would do that. So.
Okay. But the, actually, the right-of-way is on my property, not the town's.
Sorry, the right-of-way to the
So the, the town is, is a lien holder. Basically, they have an interest in the existing configuration. So if you change that, they have, the, the town would have to be a party and agree to that.
Okay, understood. I, I can
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I, I, it's one board or the other has, has to address it. So I can, I can bring it to that board.
Yeah. That's, it's not something that this board has the authority to approve.
Good. Thank you for explaining that, Phil.
And I know you've had a long night. So is there specific questions you have about the plan that would lead me to have a more complete application for next month? Any concerns that you'd like to see me build into this site plan that maybe I haven't addressed? That would sort of give you a higher level of comfort? I know this is completely informal, but I'm just kind of looking for feedback in terms of making sure I'm fully prepared.
Elevations on the buildings? I mean, if you're putting in storage buildings, there should, you know, we'd think we'd at least want to see an elevation or
It's, it's on there, actually.
It, it sounds to me like you have you've already put quite a bit of work in detail into this and you've clearly looked at our site plan regs and gone through the checklist and you're familiar with what you need waivers for. So yeah, so I can't think of anything. Granted, this is the first time most of us have seen this tonight, but it, it seems like from what we can tell, you know, it, you know, 9:22 at night after a long meeting and, you know, so quick view at it. I, I mean, I think it's so far so good, but, but we really need to make that determination. June?
So I'd met with Eric a few days ago and, you know, we kind of went over some of these things. So I think, yeah, he's got a lot of information there and we can, you know, again, this is conceptual. So I want to, you know, we, we're, we're almost looking at too many details on that plan in some ways without having notified abutters. So I think you've got a sense of what's, what he wants to do there and we'll wait for the application to come for the next meeting when he's ready. Then this looks like it'll be a subdivision and also a site plan review. So that site plan review could probably address both properties too, to have, you know, parking and other things shown. Both areas.
Okay. We'll see you next month then.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right. Finally, a preliminary consultation, Richard Gowan for Nancy Haynes, two-lot subdivision of five at 554 Texas Hill Road PID 234 dash 022 dash 20026 29.6 acres in the Ag Zone. Richard, you're still here. Thank you.
I'm here. Thank you, guys. Sorry you're here so damn late. But I do appreciate how well you've run the meeting. I want to say that to all of you. You guys do a great job in working with each other and it's kind of been impressive to watch. So
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Let me screen share real quickly. I hate to do this, but I'm going to throw you a softball at the end of the night. Now, this is pretty easy. Did that come up for everybody?
Yep.
Okay. So this isn't too far from the first public hearing you had earlier out on Old Hebron Road and Texas Hill Road. Follow Texas Hill Road a little bit further and this property is the one that has the big pasture on the left-hand side. Okay? There's 29 acres there. And Nancy Haynes is looking at subdividing off approximately 13 acres. And we're looking at going from the culvert that goes underneath Texas Hill Road to the point of the property to make it as simple as possible. Provided that comes up with a 13 acres, which math seems to show that it does. And there's some wetlands on this property for sure. There's actually down in the, this corner down in here. It shows on an overlay map that I looked at as being a bit of a floodplain on this end of the property, which doesn't come as a big surprise. In all honesty, there's one building lot that's right here about where the A is approximately, maybe a little bit further over here, which is elevated. It's nice property. We've already done the test pit there. The soils are good. Actually surprisingly good. Seasonal high water table wasn't extremely deep there, which I wouldn't have expected, but it's it's going to be fine for, for building on for sure. So my question to you guys is because this is a 13-acre lot, do we need to contour the entire property or can we just do the building area for the most part? And are we really required to do a full perimeter survey or can we just do the survey of this lot that we're going to subdivide out of the property?
All right. Well, do you mind if I ask you to stop sharing your screen just so we can
Oh, sure. Yep.
All I get is a, a few individuals. I'm impressed with what everybody sees.
Oh, there it is. Sorry.
No worries.
There we go.
All right. So oftentimes when we see the the we waive the requirement for contouring, it's because it's a small parcel carved out of a larger parent parcel, like, like we saw tonight where it was a pretty good-sized parent parcel with just a smaller build of a lot. Yeah, I guess, what do other folks think? How much do we need to see? We haven't seen a lot of subdivisions in the past year. So I think you know, that's just something that to think about for the board of what we've June, do you have an idea of like, what's a reasonable threshold for, for?
Yeah, I guess wasn't as prepared on this one. So I'm sort of thinking sometimes, you know, at least providing some information from a topo map that's more general, you know, without doing detailed contours. So the board can get a sense of it. And then I think that would help us assess if there's anything really unique there and certainly some contours where a driveway would go. So we can, you know, have a, have a, have a look at that kind of proposed driveway site. So there's a, we know what the connection would be to our town road there would be important. For the perimeter survey, you know, certainly for the, the area that, that, that has been somewhat common at least years back to not always require for a parcel the size of full perimeter and just kind of focus on that area that being, being taken out.
Okay.
In this case, it's just one new line. So I mean, you're, you're, there's going to be one new survey point that you're setting because you're going from an existing corner to a new point with a dividing line. So as long as that detail is adequately documented and you have enough information to write deed descriptions, because I mean, deed descriptions are still required for most properties. And as long as you can use the existing description and the new surveyed line to, to make that, I would feel comfortable without requiring a full survey.
Yeah.
Sounds good. And, and there is an existing survey of the property that is quite good as well. So.
Yeah. Yeah, the, yeah, I think I like the idea of, you know, trying to find some existing topography. Because that exists and knowing that's a pretty flat rate where though you're putting that subdivision line too. But, but getting some topography there so we can see, but yeah, getting it a little more detail around the driveway area. That sounds good.
Yep. Now, that, that seems like a reasonable way to do it. And to do some topo where the building area is going to be as well to just show you that it's adequately sized.
Wait, so the regulation, basically the, the requirements say topo contours at five-foot intervals. The board may modify the topographic detail depending on the proposed subdivision plan and parcel. So there's certainly the ability to do that.
Okay. All right. Does anybody see any other concerns? Nice. Okay.
Bigger parcels make it easier for sure. You know, it's not, it's, you know, I, I think there's still a state subdivision requirement that parcels under 5,000 or five acres show a 4,000 square foot area and a well location and all those things. But, you know, because it's even, even in a five-acre lot, it's usually easy to fit those in. So on a 13-acre lot with wetlands, I suspect you can still do that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's it for me. I appreciate everybody's time.
Well, thanks for sticking around for easiest thing of the night. So.
It was, it was interesting to watch. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, June, do you have any updates for us? Oh, you're on mute.
I don't given the hour, I, I had some minor updates that we can talk about in the work session. So nothing
We have another half an hour before our bylaws say that we actually have to stop this meeting. So all right, we'll save them for next time then. Anything else from the board? Anything else from the public? This was a long one tonight. So nice work, everyone. A lot of decisions we had to make. So great job. Thanks for sticking through it.
I agree. Thank you all.
You're on mute, Mike. I can see you.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion, Mike? Did you want to do anything to add?
I would agree with Richard Gowan that the board worked really well today and agree that we worked through some issues and I, we did the best we could. So good.
Great. Okay. Motion's on the table to adjourn. I'll read the roll. John.
Hi.
Mary Ann.
Hi.
Carl.
Hi.
Phil.
Hi.
Mike Bouchard.
Hi.
Susan.
Hi.
And I for me. All right. Good night, everyone. Thank you.